Good afternoon. I'd like to go ahead and call our school board work session to order today on December the 12th, 2019, and thank everybody for taking the time to come and join us at this festive time of year. So, Madam Superintendent, I'd like to turn it over to you if you would like to run the work session for us today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, the first item we have before you will be by Carol Matthews. It's our internal funds audit, and she will come forward and bring the information.
Jennifer Christensen from Carrick's Accounting Room, and Lisa Hester, Director of Accounting, they're going to join me up here, and Jennifer's going to present the results.
Good afternoon.
You should have two documents, I guess, that are bound, and one are the financial statements, and there should be one called required communications. And I'm going to kind of do things backwards this year, and I'm going to start with the required communications, because I feel like that's a good way to kind of go over a little bit of the background of the internal accounts, the audit, and what we're required to do.
I have a few extra copies if anybody wants a hard copy that don't have one.
So, if you turn to page two of the executive summary, the internal accounts are the funds that the schools and some departments have that record the receipts for things such as ticketed events, so your prom, your football games, your fundraisers, your field trips. And so, those are the types of funds that I'm talking about when I talk, when I refer to this audit, not any state funds or anything that comes from the state of Florida. So, they are funds that are raised primarily by the students in the school, and then they're spent on, normally if they're raising money for field trips, they're then spending it on the cost of field trips, fundraising for, you know, sports, you know, sports clubs, classes, and so those are the types of funds that I'm referring to here. And if you were to look in the red book, the Florida Department of Education Financial and Program Cost Accounting and Recording, which we commonly call the red book, in chapter eight, it states that the school board is responsible for the administration and control of the internal funds in the district school system, and also that there should provide for annual audit. And so, that's what I'm contracted to come in and perform that audit. And what that audit is made up of is, I kind of look at it as two factors. One is, we're going in and we're auditing the balances, and we'll go through that when we look at the financial statements in a little bit. And then the other part, what we're doing is we're selecting a sample of all the different types of receipts I mentioned before, fundraisers, admission events, contracts, and we're going to perform compliance and control testing on those items. And so, what we do is, we have a list of every transaction that goes into the internal accounts, we pick a sample of hundreds of them, and then Lisa's team goes and pulls all the backup for all the items we request. We come out here and we just dig through them and we go through them all. And then also on the spending side, we do the same thing for, you know, dispersments, for checks that are written. And so, during that time, we're looking at a handful of items, a sample of items for each school, and as I mentioned before, some departments will have internal accounts or an internal fund, so usually that activity is pretty small, so it's primarily the schools. And we're going through and doing this testing. When we're doing the testing, if we come across anything that doesn't comply with the Florida rules, the school, your school board rules, then we give what we call a finding. An example would be if, you know, the schools have a certain amount of time, if the teachers collect money for a field trip, they have to then turn the money into the front office timely. Then the front office has to make the deposit timely. So, there are very specific rules, and if there's one exception that we find, then we give them a finding for it. So, I kind of want to put that in perspective so that you know, we don't have any leeway since we're sampling a small number, anything we come across, we put in here. So, that's why, you know, you see the report, that's thick, that would be the reason, and we explain that to the schools too, because sometimes when we're done doing all of our testing, we then contact the schools and we tell them what's going to appear in that report, and we have a conference with each one, because sometimes it may be that there's some additional information they have that they didn't provide us the first time, so we give them the option to provide it to us, and at that point, we'll then remove the finding as if it never existed, because, you know, there might be additional information. So, those conferences we have with the principal and the financial secretary are on those calls that we do with each school. So, with that being said, and when we do look at these items, we're looking at 100% of all schools, not selecting a sample school. So, every school is having, you know, some items looked at. So, on page three, I kind of show a breakdown of the average findings, these findings I discussed before, per school over the years that we've conducted the audits, and you could see, we did have one year with a spike, but it's pretty consistent from year to year. So, the last three years have been very consistent, and I would expect that because as, you know, we start to learn how schools do things and schools learn how we do things, and they know what we're, you know, really what we're testing, then, you know, they're going to kind of make sure they're paying attention right and make sure that they're following all the rules, and also, I think as the years go on, they realize when we have these conferences, okay, if I have information I need to provide, it's not too late, and that's why we do those calls, because those take a few weeks to contact each school and go through it, but it's important, because if they do have the information, we want to make sure we have the full picture before putting a finding in the report. So, here in 2019, we had .77 findings per school, and that was 143. There's roughly 125 schools, and then there's a handful of departments that, again, have small activities going through in the internal funds. So, for the findings, we then have a table that breaks it down and a pie chart that breaks it down by the number of findings per school. And so, if you look, we had 87% of the schools had two or less findings, and so, you know, that's a great stat, and so I wanted to share it with you. And then, down at the bottom, you'll see a summary of the balance of all the funds we have, all of the school funds that make up our internal fund. We start out with about $10 million, we have revenue of about $13 million, spent $13 million, so we end with $10 million. And that's something that, with internal accounts, they should spend what they receive. It's always hard when you're talking to schools, it's different, you have to take off your personal financial hat and put on your school internal accounts financial hat, and understand that these funds are raised by students and they're expected to be spent in that same year on those same students. And so, what we would expect the revenue and expenditures to be the same. You know, we have a $10 million balance, but when you look at 125-plus schools and departments, you know, it is going to accumulate a little bit over the years, but I think it's, you know, seeing that the schools are all spending the funds that they're raising, that's kind of when we see that they're not spending what they're raising, then usually, you know, that's a point that we bring up to the school district, saying that, you know, it might need to be monitored, but here we have, you know, exactly what I would expect in the spending. Any questions? Yes?
Comments? I mean, that's, look at the trend, from 2015 to now, we're definitely going in the right direction. So, really proud of our schools and the direction that we're going. So, that's a kudos to everybody out there, because, you know, they don't have just one person manning the accounting, they're dealing with children and families and issues. So, this is wonderful to see that trend go down, so.
Mr. Wilson? Yeah, I'd like to echo that, and I know that Ms. Matthews and our superintendent staff have worked hard, working with the schools to make sure that we have processes in place to, you know, minimize those kinds of problems, and so they've done a wonderful job, just want to say thank you for that. You know, it's all about process, it always is, and it's about having a process that isn't overwhelming. As everyone knows, you know, we can ask folks to participate in a process that's overwhelming, and then they're not going to do it, right? So, you have to have a process that works, and clearly, we're, I think, we're finding that good balance, and it's, I think it's quite impressive, so I just want to say thank you, everybody involved.
That's awesome.
Ms. Miller?
I'm sorry. You're not noting that it's money that's, that funds have been raised by students that have to be spent out by the end of the year. I have one school that the debt is not from that, but it's been, it's lingered on for a decade or so, and we're trying to help resolve that and retire that debt. So, are there other, there are other accounts that not always are money raised by students?
Are you referring to a yearbook account?
Yes.
Yes, yearbook is, if, and that's one of the things we look for, or any accounts that have deficit balances, and they do get a finding for that, because at some point, you know, the theory is, it was...
But they weren't funded, it didn't fundraise for that?
Right, and yearbooks are a common one, because you think about these contracts you run or into for yearbooks, they're substantial contracts, and you don't know how many, how many yearbooks you're going to sell. And so, unfortunately, I have seen where schools fall into that, where they end up, you know, they have to pay a minimum amount and they don't sell enough books to cover it. And I know there is a plan, and that's my cat, is that they submit their plan. It has taken, and we do have one school that's taken several years, and they're still in the deficit, and the hard part is, it's not like you can do a simple transfer from another account, because it's all these accounts, that's one thing with internal accounts, they're all, if you're going to say earmarked, or, you know, they're all raised for specific purposes. So, it is a challenge to, for them to be able to chip away at this. I've seen it at other school districts, it's just a lot of really heavy fundraising. You know, the concern there is when a school fundraises, you know, do you publicize that this is a fundraiser to, you know, try to reduce the deficit from, you know, 10 years ago? That's where you kind of get into a tricky situation. A lot of times, it comes down to donations, where, again, you chip away and you're asking for businesses to donate to the school.
For a decade-old debt, that's the problem. Is there any, is the statute allow for any transfer of funds outside of this fundraising?
There's not, I mean, as far as statutes, that would maybe be more of a legal question, but as far as the internal accounts rules and the state of Florida rules, all they mention is that funds are raised and, you know, for a specific purpose should be spent for that purpose, and so that would probably be more of a legal type question.
And I'll say, Ms. Miller, we have been working, and I know the school you're talking in particular about, we have been really working, and every year we do chip at it, but you actually, like you said, offset it, because the current class coming up wants a yearbook as well. But I do believe there's a plan in place that's coming forward regarding that, because we really were trying to have the school do due diligence to try to help offset it without penalizing the kids.
Right.
In the end, but I do believe there's a plan coming forward. Mr. Wilson?
Well, and I'd like to comment on that. I think we all know which situation we're talking about. I think first and foremost, it goes to, it goes to a process. I mean, we may have a principal, for whatever reason, decides to order, you know, yearbooks without really knowing how many they can sell. So, I would offer that, my suggestion would be to establish a cleaner process, and I know this is not an issue for you, it's for our district, which might be, for example, make sure you get deposits from students before you order the yearbooks, just as an example, so that this kind of thing doesn't happen in the future. And I, as I understand, there were a couple of these instances, and in one case, the principal was able to clean it up, and one case they weren't. I think we could use other funds, like BP funds, to help clean this up, and that would be my preference, to clean it up, get off the books. And, you know, to the extent that we have a school that has $1,000 or $2,000 deficit, put a plan in place to then clean that up. But when we get a big one like this, two things, number one, I don't, I don't think it should be incumbent upon the principal to try to clean that up, because how do you go to the community and say, "Give me money to clean up a past debt"? I don't think that's going to be well received, and I think that hampers their opportunity to raise money moving down the road. So, you know, I think we have responsibility to try to clean that up, but more importantly, we have responsibility to put a process in place to ensure that doesn't happen moving forward. And I would offer that, to the extent that we have another principal who did clean up a large debt, that, you know, we'd probably try to help them out as well. So, that would be my thoughts related to this. I don't think, I commend any principal that was able to clean up $20,000 to $30,000, that's remarkable, but I don't think that's an expectation we should place on our principals. So, those are my thoughts. Let's find a way to ensure it doesn't happen moving forward, and let me be clear about this, we have done a remarkable job, and I want to compliment Ms. Matthews, I want to compliment our staff again for addressing these kinds of issues over the years, remarkable job of finding ways to solve these problems and putting processes in place, and I'm confident that we'll find something that we'll do here as well. So, it's, I'm not being critical, but I do think we have to be forward-thinking and find a way to resolve it.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, and I too support that, because that was not the current principal, and I don't want to put that on the children that are in that building, that's not there. So, I do support that. I believe we do have a plan, I don't know, Mr. Perron?
Yeah, we'll, I'll work with staff on that and look at the BP funds. We have used most of those, but we'll look at, working with that, or I have some other ideas and if you want to buy, Mr. Bridges, we'll talk after, see if some other funds could be used.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
Part of the process that Mr. Wilson mentioned is, because it was a debt that was transferred from another principal, I think we should have some kind of, there should be some kind of procedure or process for those debts, because you had a principal take on the debt, it's not decreased more than 25% in 10 years, and you have a, you have a school with probably lowest socioeconomic area of any of them, how are they going to fundraise for that kind of money? So, the process of what happens to principals that transfer that kind of debt, or can they, is there some way to alert early? I don't, there might be a process already to alert. But using BP funds, I, we were, you know, I've been bowling this over, because this is one of my schools, like, how can we assist in this situation? I just don't want to create a precedent for other schools to go into debt thinking that they're, we're going to help with funds. They would have to be, I would like to see what that looks like when it's proposed by finance.
Well, and that's why I was saying, we want to also address it with a process to ensure that doesn't happen.
Right.
We can't, you know, it's not okay to give principals, you know, unlimited access to do anything they want.
Might I add that I can tell you that since 2016, I know, they, we have been addressing it, trying to get it chipped down every year. So, we have put something in place where we've been trying to collect and get some of that debt reduced down. So, we're not just saying, just because you're in debt today, we're going to wipe it clean. No, you're going to have to show us where you've been trying to contribute to lowering that debt or getting rid of it. So, that has been happening, it's just that when you have a cycle of the same situation keeps occurring with another class of children, and you just don't want to say, "No, you cannot participate," or "No, we can't." And I do believe they tried to do the part of where they sell some type of a head, and that did not help either.
Right.
So, it's just...
And we even talked, I talked to the principal, they even talked about it like an online version of an, you know, a yearbook, but there's still, you know...
Yeah, there's still some, you have...
But you're talking $80 a book in a, in a school that cannot sustain that kind of debt. So, I appreciate the continued conversation. I just want to make sure that we're protecting new principals that go into schools with existing debt from a old principal, and we're following, you know, we're being, you know, mindful of not setting precedent to allow debt reduction from other funds. But thank you for your work.
Ms. Fields?
Well, I think, and Carol can maybe confirm this, but I think we've been looking at this as an issue for a long time, and when we first started, I mean, there was a tremendous amount of findings, and it has really diminished because of the fact that leadership knows that that's not anything that's acceptable. Now, we've been missing something here. So, I don't think that anybody is understanding that they don't have to watch their dollars and use them wisely, and that nobody wants to have a deficit, and if they do, then, and yearbooks have always been an issue, and at the latest have been an issue. So, it's not anything that we have not been dealing with, that's why we started doing these audits and these, and having these sort of findings, so that we can find out what the recurring issues are, and how we can address that and make it better for everyone involved, if my memory serves me correctly.
Yes, ma'am. And at the end of every fiscal year, Lisa Hester's office sends out a letter to every principal that has a deficit, and it's a very detailed letter that says they have to respond in writing as to what created the deficit, how they're going to clean it up, and in what timeframe they're going to, you know, eliminate that debt. And so, every year, this, you know, this particular principal and all principals that have a deficit get that letter and respond in writing with their plan of action.
Thank you for telling me. Mr. Wilson?
Well, and again, I know I sound like a broken record, but not every principal has every skill set, you know, some principals are stronger in certain areas. So, I think it's important that we help them with process to ensure that we're not allowing them to get themselves in situations that creates these kind of problems. But I also have a question about one of the corrected adjusting journal entries. It was the one for the carry-forward, carry-forward effect of prior year audit adjustments, in the amount of $172,000, if you recall that?
Okay.
Were we done?
Do you want to skip?
We're not, no, no.
Yeah, I got it, I apologize.
We got it, hey.
And either way, I'm fine if you want to jump forward and come back.
No, no.
We'll be there in just a minute, it's just a couple things. Any other questions? Okay. And so, on page four, that just details some of the things we're required to communicate with you. What our responsibility is as an auditor is to express opinion on the financial statements, whether they're materially stated, and then the client's responsibility, which would be management and oversight from the board here, which is responsible for establishing and maintaining those internal controls, selecting the appropriate accounting principles, and applying those. And so, I'll just kind of scroll through a little bit. If we were to run into any difficulties during the audit, we would disclose them here, and on page five, you'll see we did not have any such difficulties. Lisa and Carol, and Lisa's team that pulls all the information is, they're very helpful, and I think we worked together well during the audit to be able to get it done and get it done in a timely manner. And so, I'll move on. Another thing we'd be required to disclose if we came across any fraud or illegal acts, which we did not come across any of those during the audit, so I wanted to point that out. Page seven just mentions that investments are a significant estimate, because they're, the fair value or the amortized cost is determined by the, on the investment statements, we pull those amounts off there, so we don't feel like it's a high-risk estimate, but it is an estimate. And so, then on page eight are our adjustments, and so, so, we have two adjusting journal entries, they both have to do with receivables, and the primary reason why we have these adjustments are timing differences. For the first one, these are receivables that, for the financial statements, we had kind of written, or we allowed for, because they were from the pre-focus phase, so they were from, you know, years ago before '15. And so, we had, we had allowed for them, because, you know, when we talked with, well, back then it was different management, but, you know, it was assessed that, okay, these amounts probably aren't going to be collected, they're all amounts that have to do with the technical colleges. And so, but your school board, you have different policies and rules where, you know, you wait a certain amount of time before you get them written off, they have to be presented to you, you have to approve them, so it's just a timing difference. We're, I guess, a little more conservative about what receivables we have on the financial statements versus when they can be actually written off. And so, so that's what the first entry is, are the amounts from the past that had been allowed for. They have since been presented to the board and been approved to be written off and had been written off, so we shouldn't see that journal entry anymore. And then the second one are just the amounts that were on the books from, that were over a year old at June 30th, 2019. And so, I sit down with Luke and he, and come up with a methodology, which at this point, it was, you know, 70% of anything that was a year older, a year or year older would be allowed for. So, they're still on the, on the trial bounds or in the accounts, we just record a contra asset to reduce them down to, for the amounts where we say if a student didn't pay, you know, and it's over a year old, the likelihood of collection, you know, decreases. There is a collection agency and a new one, from what I understand, that is, you know, they feel that collection efforts are going to be, you know, even better than in the past, and so, that's something that, you know, we'll look at and see next year where the receivables are.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, thank you for the explanation, and, but I guess I was a little confused, because I thought we'd, we'd pretty much cleaned it up last year, but you're saying this will be the end of it?
We will not have this journal entry again next year.
Okay. I mean, I understand you may be writing off some of it, but not, not that much, right?
Right, and really, most of it, it's, that journal entry is just putting the allowance on, and, you know, it doesn't have an effect on the, as much on the revenue, you know, or, you know, the income statement as you would think in a for-profit situation, but it was just adjusting our opening fund balance.
Okay.
For amounts, like I said, for that timing difference. And then page nine are the entries we came across that are fairly small, you know, compared to the fund as a total, and so what we do is we call them proposed journal entries. We do not record them, but we accumulate them, so we can look at the effect of the, of all of them at the end of the audit, and then we review them with management, and we say, "We feel they're immaterial, do you agree?", and everybody agreed, so they were not recorded, but we still have to disclose them to you. And then pages 10, 11, and 12, and 13 are just the, these are management representations that we get at the end of the audit, and it's basically management just telling us, they disclosed everything to us, you know, they, you know, anything that may have happened, if there was any litigation, which there wasn't, it was disclosed to us, and so, that's where basically management like signs away their life to us, saying that everything was good. And then, and page 14 and 15 are internal control findings for the district as a whole, and as far as, like, we didn't have anything that was a material weakness, we just had something that we, we call like an improvement point, just something for consideration, and it has to do with IT policies. And, and just a little bit on 15, it just, I'm on page 15, it just details, there are some, there is a change management policy, but when we went through it and looked, there were specific things they didn't address, and this is something that, you know, we review with Dave Dittman, so, you know, it's, you may not want to dig into the detail of it, it's a little techie, but it's basically if something were to happen, like if there was a disaster and SAP went down, what are the procedures you follow to, to make sure that the school district can still operate? And, you know, changes, who's able to make changes to the software, who has access to it? Do people have availability, is it available to them when they need it? So, it's, it's not that, there's not a practice in place, but there wasn't a formal policy, if that makes sense, it's more documenting what's done. And then the other document, those are the financial statements, and so, page, pages one and two are just our standard audit opinion, and it was a unmodified, clean, clean opinion on the financial statements, they were materially stated, and then page three is the statement of fiduciary assets and liabilities, and you could see with the internal, internal accounts or internal funds, you know, there's few assets of liabilities, there's not, most of it's going to be cash and investments. And then you have a little bit of receivables and some inventory that's made up of books or, you know, uniforms, and then very little liabilities for bills, basically, that are, that needed to be paid at the end of the year, to put it in one of these terms. So, that's the, about $10 million in assets and liabilities. The footnote one just goes over different general policies, that accounting policies that the school district has, and, you know, goes through investments or specific rules of what types of investments a school district can have in Florida, and so it goes through and outlines those. And then at the end of note one, there is a new accounting standard that's coming out that is going to affect internal accounts, and at this point, there's, school districts all over the state of Florida vary on how they think internal accounts will be treated in the financial statements in the future. Basically, it comes down to if a school district has administrative involvement or direct financial involvement in the internal accounts, then, you know, you're going to go through and treat it as a fiduciary fund, which is what it is now, and the only thing that would change is, we would have this financial statement that's on page three, and then we have the schedule, like on page eight, would become, instead of being a supplementary schedule, it would be a financial statement that would be up in the front, so there wouldn't be much change. If you do have that control, then it's going to be reported, it could be reported like in the general fund. And at this point, like, like I said, we've talked to a lot of different school districts, and it, the question is, does the... and it, the question is, does the school district have administrative control over the internal funds? Because the money is raised by the students, is there, could the school district prohibit a school from purchasing a specific item out of internal accounts? And some say yes, because you have procedures and policies that they have to follow. But then others say, well, if you're looking at, you know, form over substance, substance over form, then that the rules are just to make sure that they're not violating, you know, Florida, state of Florida rules, but that in essence, the school really, or the students are really the ones that have the discretion on how to spend the money. And so this is not a discussion that would be settled today because, like I said, we've heard school districts have all different opinions about it. And, and Florida is not really issuing any kind of opinion on what they think when it comes to this specific example. So it's something that management, we had discussions during the audit and, you know, discussions will be continued. And I know discussions with the district-wide auditors also. So, so it'll be resolved, but I wanted to at least let you know that that's a new standard that we're coming out. The good part is that some school, for the school district, if there was a change, I think the way your accounting is set up, it would be a minimal burden where for a lot of school districts, it's not that situation. They have an entirely different system for internal funds. So I think that's where some of the back and, you know, disagreement is, is coming from, that it would be a big change. So.
Mr. Wilson. So some of, some of it could end up in the general fund, possibly. Is that a possibility?
It could. And there's, yes.
But it looks to me the numbers would be immaterial anyway, right? So it wouldn't create a financial statement problem. Would you agree, Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, I think it wouldn't be that much, but we're more concerned about the accounting budget. I was at a state meeting and we are in much better shape because of how we account for it. They are, the other districts are breaking out. They're very concerned about how to account for it. While it would be a pain, I think the way we do it, it would not be a major shift for us to make that change.
Okay. And then footnote two just breaks down the types of investments we have, whether they're, they're value level one or two. Level one is where they're more actively traded. And so then that estimate is, is a little easier to obtain where about, level two are investments that maybe aren't as, as commonly traded. So it's just that we have to disclose it so that you know which, which type you have. And then it just goes through, the rest of footnote two goes through your various risks that, you know, a credit risk, you could see here, the credit ratings for your investments and concentrations. If you have a large percentage of investments in one, one investment, one type of investment, we disclose that too, so that the reader knows. And then on page eight is that supplemental schedule I mentioned. So this is, if you're used to the, you know, thinking of it in the for-profit world, like an income statement has your revenues and your expenditures or your inflows and your outflows, basically. And so you could see, this is kind of a breakdown of those numbers I mentioned earlier, 13 million going in, 13 million going out. And so the ending with a, with a 10 million. And then pages nine and 10 are a standard internal control report that gets issued with all governmental audits. And then you have all the findings after that. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions?
Appreciate you being here today.
Sure.
Well, again, I just want to reiterate what was already said, and that is, this is a remarkable report. Tremendous job. I know this Matthews works with staff to help identify processes to ensure that we minimize the, the problems we might have. And I just want to say thank you to staff too for responding because we've passed some financial statements that weren't nearly this, this clean. So great job.
Lisa Hester does training once a year, and I think that's very helpful. She holds a live training session and, and we have some secretaries, school secretaries that come every year because they just want to, I think it a lot, I think, from just talking, you know, amongst each other and just want to make sure they're on top of everything. So she does an excellent job and her staff too.
Awesome. Kudos to everybody. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All your help during the audit. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you.
Happy holidays to y'all.
The next item that's coming before you is item two, and it's going to be on dependent eligibility verification, and it's another audit. So we have Linda King out of its management, and we have Mike Crowe on coming forward.
Linda asked me to talk long enough, I've heard of pull-up. So about two years ago, I unfortunately brought the information that our health plan was not doing so well. And we asked that we get more money, revenue into that account in that program, which we did during the budget. Secondly, we hoped for a good year in the health plan. We had about three or four really bad years. We're about three weeks from closing that year. And I'm glad to report we had a much, much better plan year. The last thing we did, we brought your attention or for you to look at, and we got consensus from the board, was to do a dependent eligibility verification, which is somewhat painful in itself to ask everybody to verify those that they're covering on our plan. But Linda has a PowerPoint to go over and give you some facts, and the fact that we have not done it in a while, and I think that was reason for the board to allow us to do this. So we're moving forward. We wanted to give you a heads up because you will probably get some phone calls during that process.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mike. Yeah, we, the last time we did an audit in Polk County schools was 2009. And that's the last time I did an audit in Martin County schools. And I'll tell you at the end, I talked to a couple of school boards as well to kind of see where everybody's been going with this. But the dependent process is painful. Everybody has to go in and verify their relationships. And this is marriages, these are guardians, this is their children, and this is everyone on here. And when we talk about verifying dependents, remember we're talking about all the health plans here. So we're talking not just the medical plan, we're talking the clinic benefit, which there's a value to that, as well as the dental and vision benefits that they pay for. So the initial phase is going to be mailing actually letters out to the employees. The initial concern I have is we get a lot of return mail because folks don't keep their addresses current. They don't log on, they don't make a direct deposit. So we're actually going to be working with our vendor on that process. So and we're actually also going to help email the schools and see if the secretaries can encourage folks to make sure that their addresses are current, because that certainly will help. We're going to explain the reasons for the audit. I mean, basically it comes down to dollars and, and it can be an extensive amount of money. The average value for each dependent is about $3,500 a year. On average, $3,500 to $4,000 a year beyond claims filed, eligibility. And there is, we pay a per-head admin cost each month for every, every belly button, we say, on our plan. So then we're going to mail, we're going to mail initial audit letters. We're going to explain what we're doing. We're going to list the dependents and documents required. So this is the initial phase, is that we're going to send all of this information out. Our vendor, Consovo, was chosen. It's something like we're going to have 75 to 80% participation in the first phase of the audit. And this is based on statistics. These companies that go out and do this for a living have shown that basically during your first phase, you get this kind of response rate typically from folks that are actually getting in, acknowledging the data, and then reporting back on the, on their dependents. Phase two is a reminder phase. We're going to remind folks, we're going to mail what we call non-responder letters. So we're going to mail, if we haven't heard from somebody, they're going to get a second letter. And there's going to be outbound reminder calls or emails. And again, a lot of this is going to depend on the data we have in SAP at the time, but we're going to reach out to employees to give them the opportunity to respond. And then we're going to actually, at the end of that, mail complete letters and incomplete letters, meaning folks in the second phase that did it and completed it, you're done, you're all good. Incomplete letters mean there's something missing or the data's not complete. So that's the second phase. And again, we anticipate it will rise up to about 88 or 94% completion rate by that time. And phase three is an actual appeal phase, which means we're done with the initial phase, and then we're going to allow an appeal phrase, a process. Now, this is actually a best practice and is considered by most to be kind of a requirement because there are going to be folks that we miss one way or another, right? I was on vacation, I didn't update my mail, somehow I had this huge thing where I was caring for a parent, I didn't get my mail. I didn't know. So we're going to actually allow this appeal phase for them to respond. And at the end of that, we're going to have approval and denial letters at the end of that as well. We're going to get 97 to 99% participation at that time. Okay? So that means we're going to have anywhere from 1% to 3% of our folks that have not responded, one way or another. And this is a timeline, just to give you an idea, we're going to start the introduction letters in January, in January. You're going to see all the, all the deadlines in here. We're actually going to not finish this really until April 30th is going to be the final when the appeal deadline is complete and a final report is sent to the district in May. Now, document requirements, this is where it gets really sticky. We have to have folks supply a marriage certificate. We know that just represents, it's not a marriage license, but the actual certificate saying the marriage was actually conducted. And then folks are going to have to supply, now I have a marriage certificate, I actually have two of them, but I'm no longer married. Okay? So the concern would be I could turn in, I could be covering an ex-spouse, even though we don't, may or may not have the same name. So folks have to supply a 2018 copy of their federal tax return. Now what we're looking for on that, we don't want to see any of their financial data, we don't want to see their personal pins or any of that. So we're going to ask them to redact all of that. Okay? So they can actually, what's nice you're going to see, I'll tell you right now, since it's part of the process, we're going to have an actual portal that the vendor's going to provide so they can use their smartphone, they can take a picture of it, and they can actually then go to the website even on their own same device and upload this information. Okay? So it's going to be actually, there's going to be some tools available that we don't have available here for, for day-to-day use. So we're asking them to redact all that, but they have to supply both. If they married and file separately, they have to include both copies of both returns or the married filing jointly. And those are the only returns we're going to have to satisfy really a marriage. Okay? I've had folks call and say, well, we don't file married. Well, I'm sorry, you can't qualify. You know, you have a marriage certificate, but you're telling me you file separately. No, you're not going to qualify for health insurance under our program, so. And then we have children under the age of 26, okay? They're going to have to supply a state or county issued birth certificate. And then we get into the other situations like legal custody, foster children or guardianships, same things. We're going to have signed court orders. And they're going to have to supply a 2018 tax return claiming the child is a dependent. Now, like, I think the last year I had my child on, she, it was quick, it was less expensive for her to claim her own taxes than filing underneath mom. So I would just have to show that year her tax return. I would have to supply a copy of that as well. So there's ways around this with the documentation process. Foster children, we have to have a signed letter from the social surgeon agent that they were placed in their care. Okay? And that's when they're eligible, as well as the 18 tax returns showing that their claim is a dependent. Now, related through marriage, these are blended families, same thing. We're going to have to show though, we're going to have to show the marriage certificate, showing the marriage relationship because they're not, they're natural children. And we're going to have to have a copy of the jointly filed 28 tax return, or again, both separate tax returns. Now, we do cover grandchildren, as you all know, in the state of Florida, if they're born to a dependent, covered dependent, and they're covered through 18 months. So we would have to just verify both relationships. And then a disabled child, we need a copy of a state or county issued birth certificate. And again, the tax return claiming qualified as a dependent. Now, we have something else called a qualified medical support order, which are more child support situations, paternity situations, where they can be mandated by the court to provide coverage. Those are a little bit sticky because they get, they get a little bit raw with people when they're required to do these things. So what we're going to do is actually supply that list to the vendor of the ones that we have on file. Okay? Because they don't really expire, okay, until the child gets of age. So we're going to supply those to the vendor, so they're only going to have to go after those that are not already on record in risk management. So that should save some time there as well. Again, we're going to have an employee portal that's going to be customized to the school board. It's going to have the frequently asked questions and some that I've supplied to you on the agenda. And they have to, they can submit documentation by mail, or as I said, they can upload to the secure online employee portal. And they're going to have access to a call center that's actually in central time from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, you know, open Eastern time, Monday through Friday, to ask their questions. And also the employer, my staff, is also going to have access to a portal where we're going to be able to see live statistics on the verification process, and we can actually create some customized reports out of that. So we'll know what kind of response rate we're getting, we'll see some of the questions, we'll see also the, the address corrections and things that we're having issues with. And it's going to provide details into the employee and dependent status information. Okay? And then we're going to get a final report, obviously at the end, with explaining results, outcomes and savings. Now, the cost of this audit is a little over 50, 55,000, 57,000. The cost includes all of these services, bilingual services, mailings, dedicated project managers, which we're meeting with on a regular basis through telephone calls. They're going to co-brand all of our communications and then final recording. The cost was based on our number of employees covering dependents in, in April of 2019, which was four thousand, a little over 4,000 dependents being covered. Now, the projected return on investment is actually, here you've got a savings of, if they're ineligible, found to be like 3% or 200 people, you're looking at a first-year savings of 800,000 or over 1,000% ROI. Anywhere from 3% to 8% is typically what most vendors say you're going to find is ineligible's. And this is assuming a $4,000 cost per year. We have a two-to-one ROI guarantee in our contract with Consovo, which is, which is guaranteed to identify a minimum of 28 ineligible dependents. And if it's not achieved, then the cost of the audit's reduced by 10%. Now, here's some audit impact estimates from some of the larger groups in Florida, and then I've got two school districts, as I mentioned, that I talked to as well. State of Florida health plan, as you can imagine, removed over 1,800 dependents with an estimated savings of 9.5 million dollars. Florida State Colleges Consortium, they reported savings of over a million dollars. And then we have a city in Florida, which didn't want to be named, which is over 101 ineligible dependents with an estimated savings of 350,000. And then a large manufacturing company with over 1,000 dependents. I did talk to both Palm Beach and Pinellas. Palm Beach had not done an audit since 2008, but their savings was over $5 million that they found. I don't seem to have, let me get to that page real quick because I updated it for myself. But it's considered to be a best practice, and I've talked to both Pinellas and Palm Beach. The issue in Polk, I don't know if you all realize, but we have changed the eligibility since 2009 just a little bit. And what bothers me about, and why I really thought an audit was a good impact, besides that you all decided before I do it, is that we really haven't had a mandatory enrollment since 2009. So, I mean, folks have busy lives, they're teaching, they have other priorities. So keeping track of whether or not they took Johnny off when he went in the Navy because they were already paying for family coverage, they just didn't think about it, to be honest. Because to them, it didn't impact the savings. And a lot of them haven't had the one-to-one communication with our department, just because we're so large. And until really this year, I did a couple voluntary meetings and open enrollment, it went over eligibility as well as other things. And we had a good turnout rate even for a Saturday morning, but a lot of them just don't understand the rules. So they think court ordered, we're both employed here, there's no problem staying on the plan. No. Because you're no longer married, you can't stay on there as a family unit. We have to separate that coverage out. So a lot of it is just purely housekeeping and the fact that folks don't understand the rules. So I really think we're going to see even more than the savings of this. Palm Beach, 1,500 removed, 5.25 million dollars is what that was estimated to come out as. Pinellas did it in 2013, and they removed 2.5% or approximately 230 after their appeal phase, they found during the appeal, they gained some of those back. But what my counterpart over there did say, that Linda, since that time, we have been consistent with following the rules with the eligibility and verifying. When folks ask for status changes or new employees bring on dependents, we make sure we're verifying all of this. So frankly, other than divorce situations, you know, most of your eligibility should be, be clean if you're following that going forward. Yeah, actually, Pinellas ended up saving over $600,000, so almost $700,000. And you know, that's, it's, it ends up being a tremendous amount of money, as Mike said. We're struggling to fund the health plan this year and get all of that. We've got to be sure that we're following a best practice and that we're following what we know to do for due diligence. So, questions?
Questions. Great.
Great.
We voted on this?
No.
Going to.
No.
Or is ineligible found to be ineligible, or does that include a large percentage of people who just don't give you the right documents? I mean, are they positively found to be ineligible?
Most of them, most of them are ineligible, but most could be, they just don't respond. You know, meaning, some will voluntarily in the first phase come forward and say they're, "Oh, I didn't realize, and Johnny isn't eligible, so I'm going to take him off." So some of that savings, we may actually take them off earlier, should we verify and they come forward and say that they're not eligible. So we won't wait till, like, the end of the audit period to remove them, we'll remove them when they come forward with that information. So.
Wait, you mentioned those of Pinellas County with two hundred and thirty people, and then a certain number given back on appeal? What was that, that number?
The appeal, the appeal phase. The initial results found over four point four percent of their dependents were recommended for removal, or four hundred and fifty-nine folks, and that was one point three million. After the appeal phase, they found they only removed two point five percent of their dependents, which I calculated to be a little over two hundred and thirty, so. But still, to be honest, still at the end of the appeal, though, Mr. Townsend, that was seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That's still substantial enough.
I think you're, I think you're missing my point, which is, we're going to tell, we're going to throw a large chunk of people off our insurance plan and force them to appeal their way back on, onto it. Half of these are going to be false, at least. I had no idea this audit would be like this. I'm not voting for this. I am not going to drop this, this kind of stress on our people. I'm all for pursuing different ways to verify who's doing what. There is no way I am going to vote to throw five hundred people off of our plan and then put two hundred and fifty of them back on. I mean, how many, how many people are going to die in that period?
Well, Mr. Townsend, I'm not removing them until the end of the audit period, so. They're not being removed to the end of the audit.
They're being identified, they're developing. They have to provide the documents.
There has never been a more stressful time to be a teacher or a public education employee than right, than right now. This is going to be a bomb in, in, in the middle of that.
Ms. Cunningham, then, Ms. Reynolds?
Can you go back to the timeline, Lynn?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So they'll get the letters in the mail originally, asking for them to send in this information. Then they'll get a reminder letter, asking them to go on and do this. So it's if they don't respond to any of the communication before...
It's like going to be April one.
April one deadline?
Correct.
Then they'll get a letter saying that they will be dropped effective, when, what, the letter will say they'll be dropped effective June, the following year?
June first.
June first. So they'll be affected, they'll be dropped two months later if they don't respond.
And they have an appeal phase that they can respond and...
Right. So they, so if you don't respond in the first three months, then we're going to assume that you don't have the right paperwork and you're not, that's why you're not sitting into it.
And we're also part of the duties of the eight hundred number, and the thing also is to provide them resources and answer questions about how to get the documentation. Because, to be honest, I mean, sometimes finding birth certificates, if you're not born in Florida, or you have to request them from another state, or, you know, and even if you're born overseas, those processes can take time. So Consolo's part of their, part of their fee is actually going to be assisting and helping folks get those in the quickest manner possible.
Ms. Cunningham?
And I think another piece of this that we need to not forget is that we are affecting people's lives, I get that.
Yes.
But I do believe that this has needed to have been done probably for a very long time. Okay? And I think if our marketing department, which does an awesome job, can start putting information out, like you just did to us today...
Yes.
That this is coming, this is not to drop everybody and create, as, you know, undue stress, it's to try to clean up the records, and any organization would want to do that. And that, and I understand, when you get through, as Ms. Reynolds has indicated, all those different reminders and deadlines, my question, though, is, I know you're sending everything to home, at what point, if you can't reach Lori Cunningham, can you go ahead and email them and go, "Hey, I've sent you," or my boss, say, "Hey, sent you three things", you know, "You can get me through my email," because I work here for, not everybody, but for most, and say, "Hey, have you gotten the letters? If not, I really need you to respond, because blah, blah, blah." Something where we use more than one mode, is that the word? Thank you. Yeah, that's kind of where I was going as I was listening, because some people, you know, read their mail or they've moved, I mean, there's all those circumstances, we could sit here all day and talk about them, but that's what I'm hoping, maybe, when you, when you're, before you do the mail drop letter, April one, is there some time in March, maybe, that emails could be sent to those fifteen hundred people who are not responding, I can't do the math, it's too early in the day?
Well, Linda, we also could probably tag it to the portal.
Even an initial email, they could go out saying, "There's coming."
Staff portal, you mean?
Yeah, staff portal. There, there you go. Okay, something like that, because people check it, so that was just my thought.
I just might add, we brought this up during negotiations with both unions, and they were in favor of it.
Sure, to get it cleaned up.
Over the last two years, we've talked about it.
Ms. Fields, then, Ms. Miller, then Ms. Fortney.
The mail drop letter, is that going to be certified?
No, ma'am.
Why not?
No plans to certify mail out, just because it's the address of record, so under, under even COBRA law, you mail to the address you have on record, and that's considered, that's considered, you know, your due diligence as far as that's concerned, so.
You know, I, I understand why we're doing this, I just hope to leave you with compassion.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I understand that this is going to be a challenge for everyone involved.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I don't know what the, what the cost would be to do certain, but I think it's something that we need to at least investigate to see. And then the other question that I have is, the call center hours are ten to six, if not, ten to eight. How much more would be...
We could certainly ask, we could certainly inquire.
Because a lot of people don't have time to call during the day.
Sure.
Maybe twelve days, because you're right, most of them are off.
You're right.
Yeah.
But we think we could ask them to make a call.
Those are my two things.
Sure, thank you so much.
Ms. Miller?
I just want to reiterate the messaging, we do a lot of stuff to staff, we have to make them a part of this. I think if they understood what was happening to them, that are having, you know, that we need this information, because this is very personal for a lot of people, especially divorced situations or adopted children. So the messaging definitely way ahead of time, and, and I agree with here about these different modes. I don't check, I might check my mail once a week, and I'm, and I throw most of it in the garbage without even opening it. So I think we need to look at contacting electronically.
Okay. There is, there was some discussion with emails and those sorts of things, too, so there'll be an email processing to the portal, I think that can be worked, from my own call. I'll have to look at that.
Thank you.
We have started the conversation, I believe we put it in the open enrollment, so...
We did, we talked about the rules and...
We want it way ahead, but we'll get more into it.
Great. How thoughtful. Ms. Fortney?
I can see where, if it's not message right, that's what I was going to say, that it, it's going to appear like we're, again, dumping on our employees.
Sure.
And, you know, I think, though, if they know that it might save money...
Yeah.
I think if, because we're all talking about money.
Yep.
And that's where our money went.
It's money that we had to save.
I think that would be the number one message, you know, five minutes of your time, or fifteen minutes, or five, whatever, to save the district money...
Yeah.
For you.
Yeah.
Staff.
Well, I, I think, in all honesty, too, people want to know that if they can't get a benefit, they don't want someone else obtaining it either. You know what I'm saying? So I think they get that, too.
My second thing is, does this have anything to, is it, you said it wasn't just health insurance, is it also our life insurance policy?
No, no, it is just those, those health-related benefits, which are medical, dental, vision, and the clinic.
I know, because I know some folks don't have a beneficiary kind of thing.
We're going to be, we're talking about working about that in the spring and trying to push on that. We really, normally, you try to do that during open enrollment, but we had so much going on at open enrollment, we didn't address it, so. But there were people that came forward and wanted to make sure and update that, so that was good.
Just going out.
Yeah.
Mr. Townsend?
This puts all the burden of proof on our, it's a wave of, of letters that have to get to the right spot, and yes, I know there is a process, processes involved. I feel certain these companies that do this build in a certain amount of just non-responsiveness rather than eligibility into their business model for this, that's probably how they can guarantee us a certain amount. You know, this is sort of like a voter purge, you know, it's like you, you, you go through and you look at the voter registration and, and you end up getting people who are perfectly entitled, titled, titled to vote. I mean, I think it's going to, going to be the same, the same, the same thing. We're going to chase a couple hundred people, maybe, to, in, 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 in scare forty-three hundred. I mean, I, I just think, I mean, I don't have any, any problem at all with doing an audit that's structured in us being tough on people when they sign up, or, you know, there's got to be a better way to do it than this. I mean, this is just, this is going to be a disaster, so believe, believe, believe me when I, when I, when I say that.
Any questions?
My recommendation is, for the board, is that we move forward, and we're looking at trying to make sure we get all of our information corrected, and looking at savings of how we utilize that. We know this is one of the things that we had to contend with for the last couple of years with our plan. That would be my recommendation, is that we move forward with providing this service so we can roll out, become January seventeenth. So I believe at this time, we're probably just looking for consensus of the board so that they can notify to move forward.
And I just want to reiterate what Ms. Field said, we have to use compassion so that what Mr. Townsend just said doesn't happen.
Absolutely.
Okay? And I know it's letters and it's computers and it's all that, but the human touch is what we're asking y'all to be sensitive about, because there's every situation out there of everything you mentioned and probably a hundred other scenarios. So I would ask that everybody be gentle, be kind, and let's work with it. But I'm happy to hear that in negotiations, everyone thought that that needed to be done as well, because once again, we're hoping for raises next year, and I'll put that out there, so.
Sure.
Go ahead, Madam Superintendent.
Do we have a consensus?
Well, can I make a comment before, before we do that, Madam Chair? My comment is, I think the biggest part of this is the response center, that, so folks have an opportunity to call and ask questions.
It's huge.
I mean, you know, getting, getting some sort of written document is one thing, but if I have questions, how do I resolve, get answers to those questions? So that's where the human touch, I think, comes in.
Good point.
And so have, making that available, make somebody available to answer questions is going to be a key, I think.
It's not, it's not for, like, single employees that don't even pay insurance, it's for people that are claiming dependents, right? How many folks, how many folks do we have?
Forty-seven, one seventy-nine.
Four thousand, one seventy-nine.
That covers somebody.
Somebody, whether it be a spouse or a child.
And they basically need a tax return and a marriage license, or an adoption paper.
Yeah.
I think you're going to find what we found at the school level, which is, people don't keep up with stuff.
I know.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You chase, chase stuff like that at a school all the time.
Do we have... Mr. Wilson? Do we have a consensus of the board to move forward?
Raise a hand.
Raise a hand, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Same to you, Merry Christmas, and best wishes for a new year.
The next item that's before you, then, it'd be, actually, the next two items, Ms. Fortney is referring those items, it would be ASME, and then she will actually go into some job descriptions that we are having to revise due to some statutory language, just while those revisions will be coming forward.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm here before you today to discuss the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty settlement and salary contract negotiations between the school district and ASME. Essentially, we concluded this with a salary freeze, which means no salary level advancement for the three ASME bargaining groups. That means that each of them will be paid the same as they were in the eighteen, nineteen school year. And as a part of the package agreement, there will be no premium increases or plan design increases to the twenty twenty health plan. Of note, this agreement was ratified by ASME on November sixteenth, and it did pass ratification.
Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, but...
Ms. Fortney?
I went to a couple of those bargaining sessions, just as an observer, I checked with Mr. Bridges first to make sure that was legal, and I just found it interesting how it, it appeared to me everybody wanted the same thing, but just how we got there was, you know, a little bit different. I, I've said before, we can never pay any of our employees what they're really worth, and we all know that, so. It's painful, I know, for everybody involved, but I just think as a statement to the state, I, I won't, I won't vote yes on any of these, just as a statement. And I appreciate your hard work, though.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Can you talk about any of that, there was no monetary adjustments on anything, but what about non-monetary agreements, or can you explain some of that?
Certainly, to, in, on pages three through seven of the executive summary, there are substantive changes that are listed, and it goes through each one of the books, actually, so, do you want to go through every one of those?
No, just for a public, for public record people who don't have this in front of them, some of the things that were accomplished.
So during, for the bus drivers and bus attendants in that collective bargaining agreement, we updated some language regarding the drug-free workplace, essentially changed, well, we changed some language there, pay practices and job information, physical examination specifically, we removed pre-employment terminology, we updated language to match the board policy as well. In Article Eight, the employee accountability plan, we changed some language so that we listed one specific thing as a terminable offense. We also changed unpaid leads in the bus driver, in the bus driver and bus attendant collective bargaining agreement, so that the, the language would match board policy and state and federal law, specifically regarding FMLA leave. Kind of the same things, a lot of the language that was changed in all of the agreements, we did it across the board. So what we found in examining the agreements is that some language was in, let's say, the bus driver agreement, but was not in custodial, or was not in food service and nutrition. So we wanted to at least make it as consistent as possible. In addition, we also wanted to make it consistent throughout, where, applicable, rather, throughout the other agreements as well. So PEA, let's say, had some language with FMLA, and we wanted to, again, update that so that ASME had the same language and that matched our collective, I mean, our policies and laws as well. Thanks, I just want to make sure that when we can't move money or give money to people that we underpay significantly, that we provide something more than compliance, but some of the other things that they may be asking to make their job and lives easier. Thanks for explaining that.
Other questions? So there, you have six job descriptions that are before you, and those job descriptions were able to come in line with the new statute. Are there any questions on the job descriptions? Mr. Wilson?
So this takes them from exempt to non-exempt.
Right, right, which is, it's usually, it's kind of backwards, in that usually, so let me just explain some of the terminology. Under the Fair Labor Standards Act, when you have an exempt employee, that means that they are not eligible for overtime, and a non-exempt employee means that they are now eligible for overtime. So just a historical kind of lesson. During President Obama's administration, I think in twenty sixteen, he originally brought up the fair labor standards rule. He wanted to change the exemption at that time and increase the amount. At the time, it as, it was four hundred and fifty-five dollars a week, so anyone that made less than four hundred and fifty-five dollars a week was eligible for overtime. He did try to change it at the... He did try to change it at the very last minute. A judge, I want to say in Texas, a judge in Texas said that the rule is unconstitutional and essentially stayed the current language. So now President Trump brought it back, or I'm sorry, the Department of Labor, under President Trump administration, brought it back and they did make some substantial changes to it essentially. So instead of it being from $455 a week, now the new threshold is anyone that makes below $684 a week, which means that if you make below $35,000, essentially, it's $35,568, you are now eligible for overtime. Hence why we are now bringing these six job descriptions. So anyone within these classifications are eligible for overtime based on that new rule. And again, it's kind of backwards because usually we say, no, now you're not eligible to move people to, from non-exempt to exempt.
But that helps.
But that's the historical perspective of it. And so it's about 120 employees. We plan, if you all approve this or give me a tentative yes, or consensus, rather, we plan to meet with those employees and have a conversation with them about it, but it is a good change. We don't anticipate any financial impact. Generally, these employees don't accrue overtime or they're, they don't work over 40 hours a week anyway, and so we don't anticipate that they will work over 40 hours a week. So it's no financial impact to the budget.
That's great. Ms. Wilson?
Well, therein lies my concern. Did any of them say they didn't want to do this? I mean, is it law that we, we have no choice?
It's law, it goes into effect January 1st, 2020, yes, sir. And so we have internally been meeting about it since October. I think it came out in September and we've been meeting about it in October to identify specifically who and how we would meet with them and implement the new rule and what it would take on our part to change it on the back end.
Ms. Fields?
It's gone from $455 to $6, what now?
$684 a week, so from $455 a week to $684. So really, all of those employees that were previously making under $455 a week are already exempt. It's those that are literally between $456 and $684, we're now catching those employees. Yes, sir.
So I guess if it's a change in the law, why, why are we voting on it?
You need your policies to line up with the law.
Right.
You don't want to have a, a policy that contradicts the statute.
Okay.
And then, because you all always vote on job descriptions as well, that change in the job description.
Okay, Ms. Reynolds?
I know you said you'd be meeting with them, we're getting towards Christmas break and it's effective January 1st. Is that meeting before they leave for break?
Yes, it is. So a large part of the employees work in one area and so from what I understand, Mrs. Cars Marcy, we'll meet with them soon.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Are there any questions? Great, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
The chair's asked, instead of a break, if we're okay, we're gonna keep moving forward. And the next item that we will, we will bring will be the update on the student behavioral response team. And the team is here, we knew that they, this was a new initiative that we started this year, therefore the team is bringing a mid-year update and they're gonna bring an end-of-the-year update. And we can, we plan to continue to update, update you even throughout next year so that you'll know how the plan is working and what's actually happening. Again, this plan was new, is a work in progress as we laid it out. And so I'm not gonna take up any more time, I'm gonna turn it over to John Hill, Dr. Aigs, Dr. Stanky and Mr. Butler.
Good afternoon, board. And then, we are in the implementation, discovery and analysis phase of the school discipline and student behavior response plan. You should have a hard copy of this document, a PowerPoint today. We are, it's our privilege to give you an update, we're excited about that. Been a lot of hard work and dedication from this team to move this plan forward. Just to give background, the catalyst for the plan was the collective voice of our school-based personnel, our teachers, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, support staff, assistant principals, principals, along with all the stakeholders of our system in regards to their needs and their concerns about school discipline and student behavior. The plan was designed with a strong sense of urgency and in addition to that, with the knowledge, knowing going in that there were multiple layers of challenges and that the challenges were complex and systematic. And so we, we knew that going in. Therefore, we spent a lot of time, energy and effort to try to ensure that we created a plan that was comprehensive, built with flexibility, that would allow us to get at a plan that we could sustain over time. And so if we'll take a look at the Y, not, you're ahead of me, I'm sorry, the Y, back up to the Y for me, there you go. So this is the vision that we focus on and we keep in the forefront of our minds, the bottom line, the moral imperative for us is that we are dedicated to creating a safe and caring environment that provides our students, our teachers and all of our school stakeholders, all of our, all of our system stakeholders, the best possible experience in our schools. Thank you, thank you. All right. So we've moved from theory of action to the practice of action. And in this first slide, I'd like to call your attention, while all the bullets are very important, the first two is that we, we did work to implement a comprehensive, systematic plan that addresses the social, emotional needs, learning needs, behavioral needs of our students and provide supports for our teachers and school-based personnel in terms of how to, how to help meet those needs as well and to support our entire school-based personnel along with our children. Second bullet is we're working diligently to reduce highly disruptive and intensive student behaviors. We know that those not only significantly impact the child that is dealing with that and manifesting those behaviors, but we, we know that that also disrupts the, the education and the learning environment. And so that is a very focused point and we are not just addressing the behavior, but we are working to address the cause root of that behavior. Take a look at the next theory of action slide. The process that we're utilizing for that is really focusing in our multi-tiered system of supports. We believe that if we continue to strengthen that, we continue to improve that and that continuous improvement process, that we are going to in fact be able to create a safe and caring environment. We're gonna strengthen those conditions for learning while meeting the needs of our children and we're gonna ultimately provide the type of experience that we want for every child, for every staff member and, and for our stakeholders. Our goals are very important. We remain focused on achieving these goals, improve the district's immediate and systematic response. This has been our, our mantra, that we are coming to help, we're coming to assist and we're very emphatic about getting an immediate response to our schools in order to help and provide that support. Provide systems. We know that it's a systemic issue and we know we need to build capacity to help everyone involved really understand how to, how to support, how to assist and how, how to help meet the needs of our children as well as our staff members. And we are working to expand our district-wide continuum of behavioral and mental health supports and placements. And that will continue, those goals will continue to be our focus. At this time, I'd just like to say that the team that we put together, I can't say enough positive things about them. Their dedication, their commitment, they, they're giving 110% going above and beyond as a team to, to not only put the plan together to communicate the plan and then implement the plan, they are, they are just doing everything in their power to bring this about. So very proud of the team, very thankful for them and we appreciate their work. So as I call your name, please acknowledge the board so they can put a name with a face and know our team members. Brett Butler, Director of Discipline, Jim Maxwell, Director Behavioral, Behavioral and Mental Health Services, Diane Taylor, Director, is Diane?
She's on leave.
She's on, okay, Diane is not with us, she is a significant part of our team in exceptional student education. Deborah Battisher, our Senior Coordinator of PBIS, Lori Allen, Senior Coordinator, MTSS, Dr. Foynsetta Tillman, Senior Manager of Fiddler's and Deidre Jo Sullivan, Senior Manager, ESE, Dr. Kimberly Stanky, Assistant Associate Superintendent of Learning and Support, Dr. Michael Aigs, of course, we all know, our Chief Academic Officer as well, and I'm, I'm thrilled to be a part of the team and working with the team. We'd like to go forward now and tell you some of the things that we've done and what we're accomplishing and how we're moving forward with this process. At this time, Dr. Stanky, please.
So what, what we wanted to start with was where, where did we start on day one of school this year? When we started the SBRT process and knowing that we were gonna be responding to schools and things, we wanted you to be aware that we actually started the school year with 113 cases already on record.
What is SBRT?
Student Behavior Response Team.
Okay, yeah, I'm the one that never knows the acronym, so here we go.
And I'm sorry, I'm one that does the same.
Yeah, it's okay, it's okay. S-P-R-T?
SFB.
Where is it?
SBRT, Student Behavior Response Team.
School Behavior Response Team.
School. System behavior.
Okay, thank you.
So when we started the year, we had 113 cases of individual students that we were already working with and that's, the majority of them were students with disabilities that were, have IEPs that we had been working with for several years. So you can see the breakdown of the grade levels, the majority of them were from grades three on up. And we started the school year with 27 students already enrolled in our student, our new impact behavior unit, intensive behavior units. And we had 19 students that were already receiving onsite support in their schools from our contracted invo supports of board-certified behavior analysts and registered behavior techs. So that was just where we were our first day of school, 113 cases. What we also did since last spring in introducing this to you, we had some training over the summer, some professional development called the Engage Program, or that was the title of the day, to engage our stakeholders in the process of how we were gonna be supporting our students. There was 400, more than 400 teacher, school and district staff that attended, they represented 52 elementary and 30 secondary sites. It was a very successful day of training and something that we're looking to continue to do moving forward. We'll talk about that a little bit later. We also spent a lot of time over the summer and at the beginning of the school year sharing the plan with our school-based leaders, our principals and assistant principals, all of our school counselors and all of our district-level teams, from all of our student services personnel to our coaches, all kinds of different staff members, so that they could all hear the plan and know what, what's gonna be going on as we responded to our students. We also took some time to review individual student cases to consider if any of them needed to start and, you know, in more restrictive placements to make sure they were getting the least restrictive environment possible for them, but also to meet their needs with their behaviors. As you know, we created additional intensive behavior units, we opened up with 10 of them, well, contracted for 10 of them. And so we added those throughout the year. And then we also, in order to maintain the data and the information that we would have on each of the student cases, we developed a tracker and focus. And the next slide actually gives you a quick snippet of what that tracker looks like. Bev Acosta and Bob Bedford out of RIT were phenomenal and continue to be phenomenal in supporting us with this as we have to tweak it on occasion. But this is just how we kind of know all the different cases that are in the system. Every student, when they call in, and Brett will go through that process, but every student's assigned a case number and then we just continue to track the action that's taken with them, whether his team goes out and does a meeting on campus, they do observations, if they have an IEP meeting, they write a behavior plan, anything like that. So we can go in and pull up a student and know exactly what the SBRT team has been doing to support that student throughout the year.
So where have we been since August 12th? What's happened since then? We've taken in 149-plus calls as of November 30th. And if you'll look at Kimberly, Dr. Stanky set it up just like she did the 100 before school started. And what's interesting is the K through two now represents 46% of our calls and our K through three represents 28%. So it's kind of flip-flopped, the calls are coming in opposite of where we started in the beginning of the school year. So far, we have added five more to the impact unit with 11 on the side over there. Side note, 11 more are coming in to the program through, either through an IEP or through out-of-county transferring in. And then our invo onsite support has gotten another 6% in it with 17 more on top of that. So the protocol for the school responses has worked fairly well. I get a call weekly from different schools. Currently, I think we're up to about 67 schools that we're working with so far just this year, not including the carryovers from the summer. But the school will call me, I will determine if it's a school-wide classroom or individual student need. I then will put it in the tracker system. And at that point, the tracker system is a wonderful system, it automatically generates emails out to the appropriate parties that I select. At the same time, I go ahead and follow up with a separate email, including the principal. Someone from the SBRT calls and comes out to the school. They will usually show up on average, sometimes the same day, depending on what time the phone call comes in, but usually within 24 to 48 hours, they will be onsite. Once they get there, they start their initial review with the school. Then they have a meeting with the administration and different, the teacher to come up with some ideas and where they've been, where they want to head with the student. A plan will then be developed. After the plan is developed, the SPR team members will work with the school to implement the plan. And then the plan is monitored and the tracker helps monitor that implementation of that plan. And then once a student is successful, sometimes the case can be closed, but a case is never actually closed. It is monitored throughout the rest of the year and if we need to reactivate different supports, maybe as we take them off of supports, we can do that at any given time. What we've done is, kind of like I've explained as I went through the process, was the regional teams go out to assist the schools and we are providing direct support through strengthening that multi-tiered system supports, whether it's a school-wide support, direct classroom or individual as they go out. It could be PBIS, it could be MTSS, it could be one-on-one coaching, depending on what the need is at the school.
All right, so what we've learned so far, as Mr. Butler and Dr. Stanky talked about, we realized real quick that most of our opportunity was in the K1 and 2 area. We've also learned that predominantly our cases are with students with disabilities. And we've implemented a process by which each week the SBRT team, the leadership team, meets weekly to review feedback from schools on how we're doing. We revise our protocols, we've kind of almost done two or three iterations of that, depending on the needs of the schools and what we have resource-wise. And also start to consider what are additional supports that are needed out there. So when we're looking at it, it's, we're looking at not only just what does the data tell us and where it's at, but what supports can we give to the student, to the teacher, to the school? And those protocols have been adapted as we've gone through the year. The barriers that we've identified. First, and this is not a new one, but the teacher shortage and vacancies have really impacted some of our work we're doing out there and it continues to show. Ms. Portius and her team have done an unbelievable job of trying to recruit into these positions, but this is a nationwide issue. But I do know that Ms. Portius will bring in some things and some new ideas on where we can get out of the box and think about how we can recruit. A lot of our new hires that we get this time of year, but all year long, about 50% of our, our hires into the, our district are non-ed majors. This time of year, when we're actually trying to hire into a separate classroom unit, the probability of it being a non-ed major is real high. And even if they- And even if they did have an education background, they still are struggling with what we do with the difficult behaviors that they may experience. One of the things we've identified, and this is just not unique to this situation, but it rears its head even more, is a lot of our teacher ed programs are struggling with being able to teach how do you work with students in the social, emotional learning and behavior development. So we've been really looking at that and asking ourselves why on that piece and making sure we connect back to our colleges. And again, it goes back to a supply and demand. We have teacher shortages. We also have short openings on our team. But we're trying to make sure that we're dynamic and we change the hats that we wear to where the, based on the resources we have, we deploy our resources the best we can. But the best way to help a teacher in a situation or a school in a situation is to actually push in side-by-side and work with that teacher, work with that classroom one-on-one within there. But it's literally a lack of the resources, and we're continuing to ask ourselves how we can do better with that. When we look at, what we've looked at with the professional development, we've done some stuff with that, but it's actual time to be able to do the professional development with teachers. The teachers are covered up, they have a lot of things going on. But we continue to ask ourselves, what way can we help support teachers and do professional development and make sure that we build in that time to go back and do coaching and follow-up with our teachers? One of the things that we've identified going forward, and this is something that kind of falls directly into my areas, is we're asking ourselves, what did we do further upstream than kindergarten? A lot of these opportunities are showing in kindergarten. So I've started working with my staff, with Ms. Maddie Free, Gregory Kent, and Carrie Barkman, in our preschool programs, and ask, what are we doing to help support our preschool programs, strengthening our preschool programs as best we can? So we've developed some progress monitoring for the ways we support our preschool programs and working with that. We know we have to expand our professional development opportunities as it relates to social and emotional behavior. And we're going to be doing more of that. You'll see some more of that during the summer and make sure that we have an extensive plan in that area when we roll into next year. Side-by-side coaching, again, to have the highest effect size, we know that whenever teachers need help, we need to get in those classrooms with them and do that gradual release model. It works, but we've got to have the resources to do that. We've identified an area of opportunity with our paraprofessional training and making sure that we offer the training needed because it's usually in a separate classroom that will be a teacher, but also paraprofessionals in there. And we're even considering a system that we had or a process that we had before in training our paraprofessionals to be Registered Behavior Techs. Dr. Stanky is really asking us to think about whenever we get into the summer, can we do a summer institute along these lines? And we're starting to ask ourselves that same question. What would it look like? What are other districts doing that are successful? And as y'all know, we're doing a complete review of our support services through our, the company DMG. And we will be talking about that coming up. But we've also identified similar strategies within that process, so we'll be bringing those back to you.
Okay. So when we, the next time we bring a nut date to you, one of our goals is to, and I want to make sure I clarify that first bullet. When we say share a case scenario, we're obviously, we're going to do it in a way that would not, you know, compromise a child or a teacher, staff member, or even a school. So, but we do think it would be valuable to walk you through an actual case scenario and talk about the ongoing outcomes that we have. So we're anticipating and planning for our next update to do that for you. Also, we are considering those long-range recommendations to address the social, emotional learning component. Over the break, I had read an article about the colleges that the universities are struggling with the same issues and concerns about making sure they provide support and address the needs of their collegiate students, their social, emotional being, and along with mental health. So, you know, that's something we're going to have to continue to build into our system and build capacity to do. We're going to crosswalk those opportunities. We're, had some preliminary talks and updates from the district management group. And so we're going to crosswalk that information and those findings and those recommendations with what we're doing as a team. And then one of the barriers that we're going to have to contend with is obviously the financial barrier that it's going to cause to continue to move this process forward. And so in talking with the team today, talking with Mr. Corona, we think April, May, hopefully April will be a good time to give you an idea of what the cost is going to be and what we're thinking in terms of what our needs are going to be and the cost that's going to be attached to it. So at this time, if you have any questions for us and our team members, we would love to entertain them.
Ms. Fortney, I saw your hand back on about slide 13.
Well, again, thank you. But, because you know, did y'all find the latest CDC report, 10- to 14-year-olds, number one cause of death? Right. And I hear from my, for lack of the word, constituents, that they feel like it's still being under-reported. Do we have a method of, I don't want to use the word "track," but...
What's been underworded?
The incidents. Teachers being like physically attacked, verbally abused. I'm just telling you what I hear.
Well, we appreciate the feedback. One of the things that, one of our philosophies is every day, we're trying to take in information. We embrace the good, the bad, and the ugly, except that we continue to improve. So what we'll do is we'll make a note of that, address it with principals, get their take on that, make sure...
If I was a principal, Mr. Hill, I wouldn't want to be reporting that. You know what I'm saying? It would not look good on me. I would just, you know what I'm trying to say? I mean, there's a fine line, I would think, between...
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
I'm confident that the percentage, that the majority of our principals, I'm sure, do a good job of reporting.
I'm sure. Because they want what's best.
Absolutely. And we are trying to track, you know, we are in a, we're working, Ms. Bird works diligently this, and we are too, to create a culture where we're not about the blame game. We're not interested in the blame game.
That's my point.
What we are interested in is finding out what you need and why aren't you getting it, what are the concerns?
My second question is, how are, again, you know, the mental health professionals on our legislative priority is like first and foremost in my heart and mind. And I will do everything in my power to get that to happen. But how are they integrated into this? I really didn't see that in our social workers and our guidance counselors.
Right.
Which are trained...
I said Jim is...
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, part of the program is to, we want to have a Department of Mental Health. Dr. Olson is the manager of the, of the treatment of mental health professionals and some support staff. So they provide a lot of direct services. They're integrated in the sense that when we have planning meetings on particular students, if those students also receive mental health services either through our department or contracted mental health services, we expect that mental health service personnel to take, to be part of the team that makes decisions about the student. So the integration occurs at the school level. Integration also occurs when we're doing threat management, risk assessment and threat management, considering whether my student is a danger to themselves or others. The follow-up plan there is actually legislatively required that a mental health professional be a member of the final team along with law enforcement and other people with the student. So those are two pieces of integration. The student behavior tracker that you've seen an example of largely focuses on behaviors that are disruptive or harmful, those kinds of behaviors we're just talking about, teachers being hurt, students being hurt, students losing classroom. So that's that piece. We have a more streamlined way of accessing mental health services for students. When Mr. Butler takes the call, if it sounds like a mental health problem, he will refer immediately to Dr. Olson so he can get somebody out there right away.
And in my last, you know, our social, emotional learning thing, you know, everything I read, it's like the opposite of the test and punish movement. That's what kind of creates that stress and et cetera for the teachers as well. And then I noticed everything was being done like toward the teacher, which I understand is the most important person in the room. But I hate to even say this, but maybe some sort of parenting classes or like manners or protocol, you know? It seems like we kind of, it's a disconnect to me. And we've got old-school folks trying to do this up in there, and we've got new ones that are, you know, I got you, you know, kind of deal. So, you know, and just like the little girl from Bartow High School, she private messaged me because she was going to lose her counseling services because she only had an IEP. Dr. Stanky took care of that though, I believe. But, you know, stuff like that that falls through the cracks because she didn't have an IEP.
She wasn't going to lose them.
Yeah. Well, that's what they hear, and that's what I get.
So, so Ms. Fortney...
Yes, sir. I'm done now.
Thank you for that. Interestingly enough, regarding the parenting, parents, a way to support parents and educate parents, I've had the privilege of being in several discussions now with community members about that very point and how to make that, you know, how to really organize that and make that meaningful and relevant for parents. So it's interesting that you brought that up.
And I think you, we have a couple of the hospitals here that are really starting brunch out into this, and we're going to be partners at the table.
Cleveland Regional.
We, Dr. Stanky and I talked, and I'm going to make the connection, I get the seat at the table for the district as they're developing that as well.
Thank you.
I saw Mr. Townsend, Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Miller, and Ms. Fields.
Is there, is there, oh, good.
No, I said we're going to need more time. Go ahead.
Is there any mechanism, either the local level or the state level, in evaluation of teachers or evaluation of pairs, whatever, that rewards a teacher for being very effective in social, emotional, like if, I think this is one of these very subjective things where you know who can do it, and you end up sending every difficult child to that teacher. Do we have any mechanism for rewarding them for that? Because they're not going to get rewarded for it in any...
You're talking financial reward or through evaluation?
I mean, like, is it recognized? I mean, like, what's, if you're a principal, if I send seven of my toughest kids to this person who manages them better, is that totally at the, at the authority of the principal to say this person's good at it? Is it a rubric built into how we evaluate people? I mean, shouldn't it be? Shouldn't we build in?
So systematically, I know Dr. Aix has been working toward revamping some of the, along working with Ms. Porteous. That's an interesting question that you bring up, Mr. Townsend, because we actually posed that same question to the SBRT last week. And in other words, what we were able to discern, that there's a difference between am I checking for engagement in the actual classroom, or am I checking that I'm actually teaching and meeting the behavior needs of a student? And so that is something that we're actually got on the table to have that discussion. I will tell you this, we've been able to identify, working with our senior managers, what we're going to call model classrooms or separate classrooms. And we're in the process of doing that. To where that, one of the things that we know that is the most strong that we can do is when, once somebody may be struggling with an area, if we actually take them and actually have them work with a teacher that's really, really good at it. So we've actually got some of that implemented. But I do think in what you will see coming is that in the social, emotional learning area, we will start asking ourselves, what does really good look like and how are we actually trying to capture that piece of data, just as much as the, how are you delivering the standards, if you will? So we're asking ourselves that same question.
I think that's a good question. That's got to be a good question.
And to add on to that, the idea of the concept of affirming, rewarding, praising, and doing something for those that have that capacity and are doing those things, there's been a lot of discussions about that as well. So, you know, how do you utilize and affirm those that have that skill set? Maximize that opportunity, in other words. Sorry.
No, I would just think if we're using someone as a model, teacher, a model classroom for demonstration purposes, that person probably should be highly effective. I mean, like, it may not be a one-to-one correlation in that way.
Yes, sir.
But, I mean, I think...
It is. Yeah.
It is, it is.
Okay.
One of the things that we just discovered in our discussion was, like you said, we're not just checking for engagement, but are we actually teaching corrective behavior? In other words, hear that kind of language. And we have two of our staff members, well, actually three, that are working really closely with the teachers, Dr. Allen, Ms. Battisher, and Dr. Tillman, where they're actually working with those teachers on that. But it's asking ourselves, are we capturing that piece too? And the answer is no right now on what we do with walkthroughs and stuff like that, what we need to.
I think I was... Do y'all remember the order?
No, I don't.
Okay. Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Miller, Ms. Fields, and then back to Mr. Wilson. I'll just go either way.
So, a couple of things. Mr. Maxwell, you touched on the mental health piece. So my question is, when we have to outsource that to help a school, a child, a teacher, is that, are we developing something in-house to have a group of people to assist, or are we going outside and hiring? I'm trying to get my arms around how we're doing that or planning to do that as part of this program.
Are you asking how we recruit it, our mental health facilities?
Yes. Are they in-house?
Yes.
How many do we have?
Dr. Olson, did you say where our mental health facilities came from?
There are 21 total.
21 total for the, in the district?
Yes. And some of them came from the social, emotional department, and some came from the community.
Okay.
They're our direct hiring employees.
That's my question. Are they ours?
Yes.
So we're not reaching to an agency X, Y, and Z.
And we're doing a combination. Expand on that a little more if, if it's okay?
Yes, please.
So we, our 21 people assist students that are not students with disabilities, so regular education students. We have a contract therapist in daycare that assists, and that's 20 mental health, licensed mental health therapists through daycare hospital that assist students with disabilities, where the IEP team has determined that mental health is necessary at that sort of service.
And that contract's been in existence for years.
Okay. Okay. I just wasn't sure of numbers. And, okay, so, because he brought it up earlier in his, when you spoke earlier, you referenced internal and external, so I wasn't sure. And then the next piece I want to ask, and then I'm done. You're going to work through this the rest of the year and then come back to the board with a report? When? Like June? Because we've done a whole year or...
We're shooting for April. April would be our, to accomplish what we need for the following year, April would be our target date.
Because of budgeting purposes.
Budgeting purposes and determining the cost of what we're going to need to...
To move forward.
Move forward.
Also, it's going to give you an adequate balance of, if you look at the first three months, you're going to look at the next three months. So you don't want to come back in February because you haven't had enough time between the two presentations to actually...
To be able to do it.
To take a look at it. Okay? Great. Thank you. Ms. Miller?
I just had a few things because behavior is the biggest. I want to say that I did, I've heard a lot of great things, especially in elementary schools. It looks like that's where you're going to, about quick response. So that's good to know. A few of them did have, the whole ESC, non-ESC thing, and I don't want to have, we don't have time for an explanation, but there's, the dollars spent on supports are separate for those. This is a heavily, this is more ESC than I thought you would get. And I think it leads to the fact that we, other programs who may have closed and everybody's included, trying to provide that kind of support. But this is not, when principals are told or teachers are told that there are supports available, they're not told, this is not, this for every student, any student. So not every student will have a behavior plan or a functional behavior assessment done. What is the, what is the plan for the student who doesn't? You go in and assess and then bring out?
Ms. Miller, you're asking a critical question there that we ask and have to do on each call. But I will tell you that where you may say, well, it's not a formal BIP or a, when you're looking at it, when we have a case like this, regardless of ESC, non-ESC, we would be developing a behavior plan for that student if that's what was required. So the other piece, and I know it gets real fuzzy on the funding piece of it, and that's what Ms. Cunningham is trying to... and that's what Ms. Cunningham is trying to really wrap her mind around. But when we are dealing with a student that is having extreme behavior, we're going to ask ourselves, does that student have the behavior plan or need to? Or do we need to go help the school develop one to try to help him or her be successful in the classroom? So we're not discerning, if it is an ESC student, that may be handled or who's sitting at the table may look just a little bit different. But we're still having a very similar process for both non-disabled and junior students.
You know, alternative sites are not, they are not, alternative sites house all students, ESC and non-ESC with extreme behavior or more significant behavior.
Yes, ma'am, it depends on if you're talking about like a Bill Duncan or are you talking about?
I'm talking about the intensive units.
Okay, so that's, that would be a site that's specific to that. And there's a specific process we put in place to ensure that the right students are there.
So are they combined or are they separated?
It would depend on where they're at.
So on the, at Bill Duncan and Don Woods, the intensive behavior unit classrooms are separate from the rest of the Don Woods, is that what you're asking?
Are there non-ESC students and ESC students together?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
And the supports are given to per student and funded per?
Absolutely.
Per unit.
The only, one of the thing I hear, and it's mainly because it depends where it's being processed or who's delivering it, MTSS should not be, that whole track data should not delay services. Is that something that you promote? Like, we want them to track data to see what's happening with behavior. But multi-tiered system, you try to collect data, when you have a crisis in your classroom, we do not want to delay supports to those crises.
That's correct. We, our emphasis was to get direct support immediately as possible to meet the needs and then we work from there.
The school is required to have no data whatsoever. When we send out people, we are sent to help with the extreme behavior at that time. And as we meet with the school, we do find out what information they do have on the particular need. And then we develop the plan, whether it's a student with a disability or not, for that student and work through it that way.
And I think what Ms. Fortney said, I have to, I also hear referrals are, you know, discouraged. So I want to know that's not coming from our staff. That is something that, you know, unfortunately, teachers might feel that way because we haven't given them good information. We are not telling staff or telling principals they have to reduce their referrals based on grades or performance or evaluations.
No, absolutely.
We actually, we had a very discussion on Friday of last week was that really, we can't help the issue if we don't know what the referrals are for the hospital.
I don't know how that got to be a thing, but it definitely is.
It's a layover from the old days. It's not the new way.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
It's the layover from.
And I just had, I just had one other thing. Is there, actually, I had one elementary school use youth, some nonprofit, to do a program that you were speaking of where the parents could come. At the end of the program, if they went to all the classes, they were given like $200. And $200 for these families is a lot of money. I don't know anybody that's using it now, but I called and they were looking for stuff. So are we looking, are we connecting with these social nonprofit agencies that might provide these kind of parent trainings that we just, you just don't?
We are not there yet. That's a nice.
Okay. Because I think it would be a commitment from the school to open the facility in the evening for these classes to take place. But there's not a ton of these available in Polk County, but I know there's at least one. And it was, it helped that school, which happened to be one of my schools that had a lot of issues. This information that you've given us, do we have, Mr. Aix, Dr. Aix loves videos. Have we, do we have something that we have developed yet so staff?
I think you need all three of them in the video.
And parents understand that we are attacking this problem?
Really good.
And this is what we're doing?
So Rachel Pleasant, Rachel Pleasant. Rachel Pleasant has a plan and brought her in us together and to build something out.
Okay. And the last thing I had mentioned to, sorry, Fortney, I've got one more thing. I mentioned to Mr. Hill, this is, we need to make sure the message is, this is across the board. Because we have some magnet schools that are doing amazing with taking in students they may not have taken before, and they do not have the supports for this. And they're having huge behavior issues. So I don't want, I want our schools to know, these resources are not just for neighborhood schools. These magnet schools.
I have had requests from, I think, just about every magnet school except for one or two. Because like I said, currently we're up to 66 schools this year, not counting the carryover schools that were part of last year's.
I appreciate your time.
That's wonderful. Ms. Fields, hold on, Fortney? I was going around the table. Okay, Ms. Fields, then back to Ms. Fortney.
I just have one question. When Mr. Butler was talking about the 149 calls. And you talked about the students and the schools and the leadership, but nothing was mentioned about the parents. When are parents brought into discussion on the plan? Because nobody said anything about the parents. And you guys know as well as I, that's where it all stems from.
What will happen is when I make the initial call or the initial call comes into me, I inform the team. The team goes out and gathers the necessary information to know how and what to do to proceed the second meeting. The parents are invited to that planning meeting for what supports can be done at the school for that individual student's needs.
And then that's when they're involved on that point on?
And they may already be involved a lot of times with the school going, I need some help with my child. And that may be where I get the phone call and I divert it to Dr. Olson if they're talking, if parents are really concerned about mental health or something else. So it's hand in hand usually right from the start or very shortly thereafter.
So, Ms. Fields, it's a matter of practice. That's probably why we didn't have it out in front. It's a matter of protocol and practice that we contact, communicate and work with parents. And so, but we will note that.
But I think that it needs to be said, not just student, school and leadership. I think parents need to be encompassing that conversation as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Really, no. Of those students that are in the intensive behavior units, I have 46 students. So now the parents are provided monthly progress reports. That's a requirement of the contract for that program. So every month they get a progress report on how this student is doing and how close they are to working their way out of the program.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Fortney, then Ms. Wilson.
I'm not sure that I phrased my question right earlier about mental health and social workers and guidance counselors. Let me try again. Again, I only know what I hear. And I have a lot of, a lot of people that I know that are guidance counselors and social workers. And they feel like they are getting the brunt of the application of this plan. Like, I don't know how else to say it. They feel like it's, they need some support as well, I guess is mine.
They're very much a part of this and we are very in tune to that. Especially after, you know, sitting on a couple of those sessions with you.
Yes, sir.
And so I think one of the things that we will work toward when we crosswalk the DMG information, as we continue to move forward, we are trying to find ways to maximize our current resources, one of which is our personnel, and not only maximize opportunities, but find ways to support and alleviate some of the load.
And I think it really depends on the people, I hate to say it that way, but I know that a couple of my schools, they love their mental health person. Like, he hangs the moon, he does everything. And then you go, I haven't seen one. Oh, they have an office here. Oh, okay. It's just hit and miss. And then that workload trickles. Just a concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson? Your turn.
Well, as I think about this, I think about it from the macro level. And in the, in the early 70s, the federal government started passing a series of acts that I refer to generally as the Free and Appropriate Public Education Acts. And essentially what happened was, we began moving ESC students and by extension at-risk students into traditional classroom settings, least restrictive environment, right? And, and, and we should be doing that. I mean, as one of the leading nations in the world, we should be providing a free and appropriate publication to all of our students. The problem is they funded it 14%. Ms. Miller, is that correct?
That's 16, I think.
Oh, 16%. So we're asked to find a solution to an unfunded mandate. As I look at these issues, it's not a lack of identifying the core issue. It's not a lack of a strategy. It's not a lack of process. It's a lack of resources. That really is the core issue. And it's just incredibly bizarre that our legislators don't understand that and work toward solving that problem. You know, I, I think, I'm hoping that our community schools, where we have the community involved in providing some of those resources, I'm hoping to use that as a case study to take to our state legislators and, you know, at some point in time to our federal legislators, to say, look, you can't expect us to meet all these needs without providing the resources to do so. And I say that for this reason. I think we also have to be careful about managing expectations. You guys are doing a wonderful thing in finding some creative solutions to this massive problem. But, but ultimately, we have to think about managing expectations because this is not going to be something we can address without the appropriate resources. It's just that simple. And so those are my thoughts. And, you know, in a couple of years, I'm hoping to have a finished product that I can present to our legislature. And then I'll, I'll be out of the school business. I don't know. But it's, it's just incredibly frustrating. And again, I commend you for trying to find creative solutions, but it's, it's a problem.
Well, Doc, can I say one more thing? I'm so sorry. Dr. Aix and I have talked about this, you know, to me, there is either natural teachers or not. I mean, that's just the way I've seen it over my 33-plus years. And some folks can handle these things better than others. And, you know, that's not to say that the problems in the classroom aren't real. And I've said this before, back in the day, I might have had three kids all day that required special intervention from me or a skill from me or a coddling from me or whatever. And now you've got three in every row. And that's just overwhelming when you get to C-26 and we're looking at class size again. You know, so that's all I'm going to say.
I just want to confirm what Ms. Fortney's saying, only because, because of school choice, unintended consequence was, we have now, we do not have a natural setting of students with high behavior needs or students with disabilities. Used to, you had a natural setting, no more than a third at that. But now you're looking at over half for a lot of our teachers and they're responsible for a lot of work without the money from the federal government or matched by the state to support them.
So I'd like to wrap up. The team that we were tasked to do was, it was, it was heard from the teachers and what was going on within the schools. Each region is now, they have a team that they can deploy and the responses are there. The thing that we're very cautious about is, as we've seen numbers going up, is having those resources and the team members to address the schools on the need. And that's going to be part of our next conversation. That's why we want to get a good sampling from the beginning of the year to the end of the year so we can take a look, are we trending up, trending down, holding? What do we need additional resources to come into play? So I do thank the team for getting together and making sure we support the regions and we support, and our team members that are out there in the audience. Because this is something that's on top of their regular duties. This has been layered on top of their regular duties as we develop this team. So I want to thank all of them for jumping in and making sure we can support the teachers in the classroom. And we did hear the call to get to the parents. And we do need to address that as well. And hopefully with Lakeland Regional and the different hospitals coming on board, we can bring that forward and they can help us with that work too. So, I've got any other questions?
Great job. Great job, thank you so much.
Chair, you calling for a 10-minute break?
Yes.
Is it 10? You want to say five and then you're going to take 10, is that what you're doing?
There are five-minute breaks.
So Fortney will be back because we have to be concluded at the rear.
Okay, we're going to get started. Okay, all right. So I wanted to cover a couple of things this afternoon so everybody kind of knows where we're headed coming into the new year. The first thing is, it was on our original agenda today to talk about our direct employees contracts for Wes and Carol, Mr. Bridges and Mrs. Matthews. And I just wanted you to know that I've met with both of those individuals. And they are going to be looking at their contracts. They're going to be doing some investigative work to find out what other folks make as well in their positions in other districts. For those of you that weren't here, in 2017, we voted as a board to not renew after the three years was up, which occurs in June of 2020. So it is time to look at the contracts. And I will be bringing you that information to the work session on January the 14th. So I just wanted everybody to know that we're in process of working through that and will bring something to the board for discussion quickly because, you know, June 2020 is right around the corner. So you'll be getting that. Okay, so extended work sessions. We had talked about having an extended work session on the days that we do not have school board meetings to be able to talk and discuss items. Each of you were asked to provide some information on some items that were important to you. I have compiled that information, Susan and I together. I think there's three that way. And I have attempted to put this together in a format for you to review. I got that by four, one, two, three, four. And I'll just draw your attention to it when everybody gets a copy. Oh, she left you off, really?
Yes.
Okay, so we've left off. All right, so here's our first attempt to do this. And what I'd like this to be going forward is a living, breathing document that we continue to add to as things come up. So I draw your attention to District 6, if you will. Mr. Wilson requested to speak about academies expansion. We are bringing that to you at the extended work session on January 14th. As well as Lisa Miller requested an IRIS discussion. And I know she was hoping to have that today, but she was gracious enough to understand that we're trying to move forward and we want some time so we can sit and actually discuss things. And so having heard that comment from so many of the board members, I thought it would be good to start putting dates down. And then Superintendent and I are going to continue to work in order to put more dates on each of these items as we go through the year. So we're hoping that in a couple of weeks, we'll be able, by, by January 14th, I'm hoping to have more dates on here. But I at least wanted you to know that our first work session in January was going to be two of the items that have been submitted. And I apologize, I didn't catch that. So we'll take care of that and get it reprinted for everybody anyways. So those two items are coming forward.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
For the, for those two items, would it be helpful for us to submit specific questions we had about it to staff beforehand?
That would be great. If you can submit those to, I'm going to ask, they go to Wendy? If you just send them to Wendy and that way I can get them ahead to staff. And at least we can get them a week ahead so they'll have time to get those and work them. And I think that'll open up a great discussion as we're doing those.
Great question, thank you. Appreciate that, Ms. Reynolds. Okay, so the next thing I wanted to bring up, and I know we normally do it in a board meeting. I just, I don't like surprises, just not who I am. So I'd like to go ahead and pass out board committee assignments. And we can have some discussion here. Or if you'd like, if you're not happy, talk to me between now and the board meeting because I would like to just be able to read it and be done. I'm providing it in a list format so you have something to refer to if you're questioning timing and all of that. Try to create this in such a fashion that it should answer most of your questions. And I'm going to go through them real quick, if you don't mind, as soon as everybody gets a copy. And I do have extras if somebody needs them, tip them your way. Okay, so going down the list, real quick, Audit Committee, Billy, he put that on his request. Central Florida Public School Board Coalition, member and alternate. Right now I was going to ask Ms. Fields if she could fill that slot. Polk County Head Start, Sarah Fortney. Polk Education Foundation Board of Directors. It rotates by board member district each year. I was on it last year as District 2, so now it would move to Ms. Fortney as District 3. Polk Vision Liaison, I know several of you put it on there. I talked with Kim Long personally, and she has indicated that that really is a two-year term. And Ms. Reynolds has been on it for a year. And then this would be her second year to complete that. The explanation is that certainly they want people that are there that can commit and be a part of the process and that two years is typically what they would prefer.
Okay, can I clarify something real quick? So the Vision Liaison, that's for the committees?
Yes, Oversight.
But just the, well, it's Literacy Committee and the?
There's four of them.
There's four. Those are the two that, I accidentally sent my email, the two that I listed were just the two that we are kind of in the middle of projects on right now that, I feel like leaving in the middle of the conversation would be.
Right, so that's the, so that's like the operational stuff, and then there's the board, the Board of Director stuff. Yeah, just, I mean, this is fine, I'm not, but I did get knocked off of this after my first year, so.
You did.
So I probably would have been more assertive about that if I had been there for a longer time, but it's fine.
They did not, at that point in time, she did not let me down, that that was a two-year thing.
And that's something that's changed in the past. They announced it, their board, their annual meeting, which was in August, I believe, that they're, everybody that was on their governing board last year is now doing a second-year term, that they're trying to transition to two-year terms.
Right, and I took the opportunity to go to talk to her, so I would understand, because there's also, I asked her, there are, maybe there are other board members who would want to serve, and I've talked to several of you who requested that, and she said, "You know, if they'd like to serve on another capacity, but we just don't want to make it where it's formal here." If you say, "Hey, I want to get involved, but I want to be on government or something else," Ms. Long said she would be thrilled to have any of the board members come and help out, so.
If there's multiple committees, like the two, the two that I was on were Literacy and Attendance. Maybe moving ahead, you know, once you finish your two years, it makes sense to split some of those committees up, like somebody's on one of, so that gives everybody access.
A chance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thing to think about.
Right.
Okay.
And that's kind of why I've put like terms and everything under each one, so everybody kind of gets what's going on, because I was so confused. I was like, who goes when and whatever? So here we are. Then we have the Sales Tax Oversight Committee. And I've asked Ms. Miller if she would be so kind and serve there. I don't have you an alternate unless we decide to have one. So that's where we are. We, where, yes.
Can I be the alternate on that?
Yeah! Is that okay?
I do.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Townsend, I appreciate that. Okay, and then down on the committee assignments, this is the part that the board votes on. So with the FSB Board of Directors, there's a member and an alternate. However, the term, as you all may know or remember, runs differently than this term. So I put the dates of the term there going forward. So we would not be, so it's currently Ms. Reynolds and Ms. Fortney, and that'll go through June. And so probably at the May board meeting, we're going to need to discuss that, those nominations and vote on that. Similarly, with the FSBA Legislative Committee, it's Ms. Reynolds and Ms. Miller. Once again, those dates are not, don't coincide with right now, so we'll address that in May of 2020, moving forward. And so the two that we are going to bring up tonight on the, you probably already saw it on our agenda, is Polk Vision Board of Directors, that's the governing board. And once again, Mr. Wilson served last year, and she expressed an interest to have someone there for two years. So this would be Mr. Wilson's second year to complete that. And then on the Value Adjustment Board, we have a member and an alternate. I'm going to ask Mr. Wilson to serve, and Mr. Townsend, if you'd be so kind, and be his alternate. So if y'all hang on to this, I'm not going to pass them out tonight, because you have them today. If somebody wants to add, or just let me know, because I would love to be able to just announce them, and then you have your copy going forward. And I'll get your name added, Mr. Townsend, for the Sales Tax Oversight Committee as an alternate.
Ms. Cunningham?
Ma'am.
Board of School Board or Association Legislative Committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we have more than one alternate?
Normally, they only request from the past, only to have one?
Well, because I'm working toward leadership and that, and I think that would help our district. I already got my inspiring.
Being the alternate, I mean, if my role is alternate, it's just when Ms. Reynolds.
Okay, but we've already, we don't get to change that till June, is what I'm saying.
I just wanted to bring it up, because I got my little aspiring leaders pen, which inspired me.
Yay! Okay. So you're inspired?
As an aspiring.
I love it. All right, Ms. Fortney, I'm going to add you. And then if you want to communicate directly with FSBA, so that if sometime Ms. Miller is unable to attend and you want to fill, that'd be great. But we need to keep it as this until.
They know me there too.
I know. You're awesome. Okay, any questions? If y'all have anything, let me know, please, moving forward. Hang on to your sheets, because you'll be able to use that as a reference. Okay, work sessions, I just wanted to announce today, we're going to hopefully end a little bit early. But going forward, I'm going to request, and Superintendent and I have discussed this, to end by 4:00 p.m. We always have discipline, there needs to be time for break, for restroom, and so forth and so on. So we're going to work towards the 4:00 p.m., but on the flip side, there's the times when we don't have board meetings, and we'll have our work session essentially from 9:00 in the morning until possibly 3:00 in the afternoon, where we can add things in there as needed, so that we're not always so rushed, running from meeting to meeting. So I would appreciate everybody's help in trying to stay on somewhat of a schedule. The other thing I need to bring up is on the week of January 20th, if you would pull out your calendars, we have three things scheduled. On Tuesday, we have Master Board Training on January 21. On January 22, 23, and 24 is the annual day in the legislature in Tallahassee. And then on Thursday, January 23rd, is our Teacher and School Employee Banquet. That's a lot to chew, and I know we all probably are going to spread ourselves out. So my question is, in trying to plan for next month, do we leave it alone, and each of us pick something we want to be at and move forward? Or do we want to reschedule? Obviously, we can't reschedule Tallahassee nor the Employee of the Year. So the question is, do we want to reschedule our Master Board Training?
How many times?
I think, excuse me?
How many times do we put that off now?
I don't know, but I just.
Three or four times already.
Have we? I mean, I'm okay, but I just, I wanted to bring it up, so people didn't say, "Wait a minute." If you all are good with having it then, and then for those that want to head to Tallahassee on the morning of the 22nd, that's fine. I'm just trying to be respectful of your time and diligence, and time off of work, and so on and so forth. Comments, thoughts? You're good? You're good? Everybody good?
I'm good.
Okay, I'll move forward then with Susan. I have the list of Master Board stuff, and we'll get on with that. Thank you so much. At this point, I wanted to ask a couple of things. Number one is, Mr. Townsend has requested tonight to put up a video regarding an individual and this person, I don't know her, so this person's comments. I watched it, it's okay. I just don't know, I just, I'm going to request that when situations come up like this, that the board decides what we do, okay? I'm just not sure that that video does anything for us in light of what we're trying to accomplish. So I'm asking, I don't know if all of you have seen it? You haven't? He mailed it out to everybody, I thought? Oh, you did? I thought you did to all the board. No, okay. It's hard to make a decision on something you haven't seen, so I get it. I just, as we move forward, I'm wanting us to be a very positive, cohesive group. There are issues out there, and the world is as it is. I just want us to present ourselves in a public forum. You can make any comments you want to make, that's your business, and she's got hers, and you have yours, and everybody else. I just felt after watching the video that it would not do anything to positively impact our students in public education. So I thought I'd bring it before the group to say, "How do you all feel?" But if y'all haven't seen it, it's kind of hard to weigh in, so. Do you feel very strongly about showing that video this evening?
I do. I mean, I'm going to state my piece about the conference thing tonight and move on, but this is the person who accompanied the Superintendent on that conference.
Okay.
It's important, it's reflective of one of the key things we're addressing, and I think it relates to a lot of things.
Okay, so.
And let me just say, I would not try to limit anything, any of the rest of you. I mean, you're all elected officials. This is a statement that a woman gave at the Board of Education meeting in Lakeland. I mean, it's, I mean, it's not like it's some certificiously taped thing.
No, no, I understand.
She got it and made a public statement.
I understand. I guess, let me do this then. Let me ask Superintendent, I know several of you had questions about the conference, so I thought we'd take a few minutes. I'm only going to give us like 10 minutes at most to discuss this, because she did go to a conference that apparently others, many have been to, and I asked her if she would discuss it here today. And I'm hoping we can put some closure on it right here in our work session before we head to our public meeting. So, Ms. Superintendent, would you like to kind of let the group know?
Sure. So I did attend the conference. I was actually invited as a guest back in August to attend a national summit, which many people attend that conference. And the conference, I did attend the week prior to the Thanksgiving break. I would tell you, it was a well-balanced conference. You had state representatives, superintendents from all over, you had principals, teachers, actually, there were parents, and there were children there. And you had, I believe, probably out of 47 states, there were probably a good 40, if not more than that, commissioners of education that were there. So it was a well-balanced conference. I would tell you that in the conference, there were also, FEA was there, you had FEA members that were at the conference as well, as well as people that were looking to say, "Here's what we're doing in education." The first day, we did a tour of Cajon Valley Public Schools, looking at workforce, and workforce was there, and some college presidents were also there. So as we looked at the workforce, and they were looking at a new web world to work, where they're actually including something with Myers-Briggs in there called the Riot Act. Very interesting how you're looking at the careers that possibly children may aspire to go into, how that connects in the classroom and how they address it, and bridge instruction with that in the classroom. So looking at, we actually toured the elementary and the middle. The one thing I want to see is, it's not in high school yet, how does it transfer over to the high school sector? So Myers-Briggs is a part of it, which we use Myers-Briggs. Also, Sal Khan was there in the conference, and listening to Sal Khan, some of the work that he's doing, and there's a county here in Florida that's piloting some of that work, and we're trying to see, how do we actually kind of get into what he's doing with Sal Khan? A lot of our teachers use that Khan Academy right now, but now they're looking at bringing that to the districts, and we have one district that's doing it, going throughout. So I'm in conversation with the district, I was actually texting staff, and seeing if they can get in contact with the staff members of that district to see, how do we become a part of that? Because that is something that he's doing that is really impactful. Another interesting conversation we had was Cheryl Brown Henderson, who is the plaintiff's daughter of Brown v. Board, and looking at segregation versus desegregation, and hearing the conversations that's taking place, and how we have to reset, and what we're looking at, for not only just one side of the equation of children, but low poverty versus those children that are more affluent. So the, you know, the conversations that we were having were very rich. I would tell you that as we look, we're working on our student behavior response in the social, emotional learning, and I was already talking to Kimberly, that is a big piece. That is a part where a lot of parents were there, talking about what a school district's doing with the social and emotional learning section of it. So it was a very well-attended, very well-rounded conference. I've already probably lined it up, staff members with conferences that are birthing out of this, of the work that's going on around the nation. I would tell you that when we always attend conferences, it's refreshing to see what your counterparts are doing in education around. It wasn't one-sided, but to see what they're doing, to bring back some of the things, and then for staff to say, "Hey, we know about that because we've been hearing about it, and we are anxious to start to work on it," and then trying to connect individuals. So it was a great conference that we attended, yes.
Okay, I know there were some questions, because several of you contacted me.
Could I ask you?
Yes.
This is Jeb Bush's conference, Sarah made reference to Test and Punish. This organization is the wellspring of all of that. Whatever they did there was window dressing. They're already talking about how to adjust school, school grades again, to create more Es and Fs. Everything we dislike about education, the testing, the BAM, the fact that you can't treat a child as a human being, whatever social, emotional garbage they were talking about out there, they don't mean, they're not going to put that into practice. This is a political conference, which is why we sent our lobbyist and not Dr. Aig's. This is a political conference. Going to it and doing what we did was a political choice. I think it was a bad choice, I think, at a time when, you know, this is the same foundation who is the reason why our teachers aren't paid well. So same foundation that really has run education in Florida and America for 20 years, and, you know, they're doing a lot of things that voters don't want, and, you know, I think it was a very bad mistake to go and participate in that. Particularly at a time when we're asking our employees, who this conference just routinely tries to find ways to stick it to, to take, you know, a freeze in pay, and it is just badly done. On top of that, I asked for a detailed cost accounting, which I still have not gotten, that was like three weeks, three weeks ago. The conference was paid for by a couple of rich guys from, well, the travel is paid for by a couple of rich guys from Lakeland who hate public schools, who are almost certainly going to be involved in some kind of for-profit charter, charter thing. The woman they paid for it through, her name is Kate Wallace, and she's, many of us have tried to collaborate with her for a while. She has no interest in collaboration with any of us, well, certainly not me, because I've tried. And you'll see what she said on the video, on the video tonight. But we've sat in this room, and we've sat in that room many times, and talked about how badly we're funded, how mistreated our folks are, and how the state doesn't get it. This is the state. I mean, these are the people who tell the state what to do. And, you know, I, it was just a bad political mistake. On top of that, the conference was Wednesday and Thursday. According to, you know, the message we got, I guess they flew out Friday, Monday morning, and came back sometime late Friday. I mean, I, I mean, I'd asked for a fairly detailed accounting of the, as well, having died on it. I think the one real, again, I'm going to state my piece tonight and be done. But the, but I do have a couple of policy things, like one, I think, all of us school board members, if there's a trip that we have, that we're going on, you know, Sarah, Sarah Beth, you just have one to, as well, we're required to approve that ahead of time, and we have a policy where, I mean, I think it's, is it a formal policy, or we just kind of, where you say what you're going to do and what the reasoning is? I mean, I think we should apply that to the Superintendent.
That was done.
I see no reason, it was not done in this meeting.
Not here, but it was done through the chair, which is policy.
Publicly. Well, I'm, let me, I want the same exact approach that board members have done for Secondly, you know, I mean, you know, I'd like to discuss the advocacy function as a whole. I don't think our advocacy function is very effective right now. And, you know, that's for a different time, but I would like to discuss what, right now, we have an advocacy function that is divided between coordinating policy half the time and, I guess, doing advocacy or legislative stuff the other time. I think we should think through which of those sides has the most value and best outcome. Again, this was a political conference, it was an ideological conference, which is why the taxpayers sent our lobbyist to it. It wasn't an academic. And, you know, that's just.
Well, I noted that, I noted that, that you'd like to discuss the advocacy function, and we'll put that on one of the agendas. and we'll put that on one of the agendas for our work session, and we can talk about it, because that's, you know, there's a lot to that piece, certainly. But I do assure you, after talking with Superintendent, yeah, I, we're going to work towards something that we can all be happy with going forward, as far as letting board members know what's going on, who's going where. Are we perfect? We're not. We need to work on that, and Superintendent, and I have talked about that. I will say, though, it is not part of her contract for us, just like it isn't for Sarah Beth or anybody else, to tell you an hour by hour, where am I, what am I doing, what am I going? I mean, we're adults here. We have to treat each other in professionalism. So, I can understand that you want some understanding of the advocacy piece, but I personally cannot support asking anybody, even Sarah Beth, when she was excited as she was going to Nashville, and I know, you know, Mrs. Byrd learned a lot at that conference, we have to remember that we're professionals here, and we have to treat each other that way.
Go, go, go look at my entries in IRIS, which is where, which is where we've been asked to do it. I said I'd like a detailed schedule and cost breakdown, which we still have not gotten. I mean, I laid out this exact, this exact scenario at the, you know, at the FSBA meeting with the ethics folks, and they were like, don't do that. I mean, you know, that's not for me to go down any path on. But the fact that we still don't have a cost accounting, that we still don't know who paid for, I mean, we have it from them.
Sure.
But it's sort of silly, and the, you know, I sent a note saying I would advise you, or I think it was friendly advice, I would advise you to keep logs of what you do, but that was at advisory. You know, my request is for a cost breakdown of the trip, who paid for what, and what the full itinerary was. What I got back was a link to the conference schedule, well, they were gone Monday through Friday.
Sure. I understand.
I mean, do you think the taxpayers are not entitled about?
I just think at some point, we have to treat each other with professionalism. You didn't ask Sarah Beth when she went to Nashville, give me a detailed log of everything.
Because she told us what she was going to do.
What do you mean? She told us, when she came back?
I told her I was going to a conference.
Right. But that was it. I mean, when she came back, she told us. That's why, as Superintendent, if you're excited and learned some stuff, share with us, and going forward, as you use those items, like Ms. Reynolds did, all I'm saying is, I'm not, I don't want to be in the position here to single out each other. I just don't think that's professional. If you have a problem with it, and I don't know your political view on all this, I don't know all these people that you're referring to, but bottom line to me, if it makes sense, and it's good for public education, from what I understand, and I'm going to start calling on other people to give their comments, we've, people have gone to this prior to Superintendent and Ms. Dodge through the years, because it's been a conference that they have respected. So, I feel like we're singling out one person. Nobody asked Hunt Berryman, give me a log of why you went and what you did.
Well, I ran against Hunt Berryman.
What's that got to do with him going to the conference, though? That's what I'm saying. That's an individual choice as a board member. That's kind of how I feel. So, Mr. Wilson, you had your hand up for a while now.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I think the FASB thing, when they're talking about ethics, they're talking about elected officials and not an appointed superintendent. So, I do see that as being a little different. I agree with Mr. Townsend. It's the Jeb Bush Foundation, no matter what they want to call it, and it has not been helpful to education. And I like Jeb Bush as governor, but he's wrong about education. It's just that simple. I attended in 2014, and this is what I came away with. Their goal is choice, 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 and more choice, and they can't answer why that's good. If you go, when I went to the conference, I went to the breakout sessions, I heard that repeatedly, but there was no response to why that's good for our students, why that's good for our population, or how that improves education. I think that's a fundamental problem of that particular foundation. They attempt to apply a business model to education, which will never work, and what's more stunning to me is they're applying a business model from the 1960s that won't even work in today's business environment. It's not working. We know it's not working. We did a couple of months ago, Betsy DeVos was in an article saying that she was incredibly disappointed and frustrated that we are going backwards in education here in this country. And so, I think that, I support the Superintendent going to that conference. I think that we should all should go, because I think it's important for us, it's not just good enough to hear from someone else. You need to go and see it. But in addition to that, whether we like it or not, that foundation does control education in our country, and does control education in the state of Florida. So, it's good to know what's coming down the road. I think it's important for the Superintendent to go there and see what's happening, you know, as it relates to things moving down the road. And if they're now opening it up to other individuals to speak about the other side of the conversation, I think that's helpful to all of us as well. So, I think it's not a good idea ever to shut down a conversation, any conversation. I think it's important for us to engage in them, wherever they are, wherever they might be. And by the way, they're always going to hold them at expensive resorts. That's how they attract people. So, there's never going to be a time where they hold it someplace that is reasonable, right?
Motel City.
Yeah, Motel City, that's not going to happen. So, I just want to go on record as saying I support what the Superintendent did. I do agree that it's important for her to convey and to discuss with our community what, why she's going to that conference, because it is controversial, and she's done that. But I think it's important for her to do that, and so I support her decision to do that. It's, I do agree with you, Mr. Townsend, they're not helping us solve the problems. And, you know, their goals may be, their intentions might be good. I don't know, but it's clearly not working. I think in a matter, it's just a matter of time before that becomes clear to everyone. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Mills? Ms. Fields, I'm sorry.
I have turned up on my own, but I patiently waited. I think that it's an insult that Ms. Byrd, we even be asked to do a detailed analysis of our trip. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the only reason why the board members now have to put their travel on the agenda is because of the state law that was passed. Before that, we didn't have to do that. We did not have to do that at all. And so, if we're going to make our Superintendent have a detail, I went to the bathroom at 10 o'clock. I left the bathroom, and then I went back to session one. I stayed there, made a phone call. We're going to have her do that? Then everybody who travels for the Polk County Public Schools needs to do the same thing. I think it's discriminatory, and I don't think it's a practice that we need to even embrace, and I would not be embracing anything like that. Because as you said, Ms. Cunningham, we didn't do that with Ms. Sarah Beth Reynolds when she went to Nashville. We didn't do that. And so, why would we do that with our superintendent in schools? We have hired her to run this school district, and if we don't like what she's doing, I've said this before, then get rid of her.
Ms. Mills?
I just, the optics from the district, and the teachers, and what they saw, I would like to change the process on how we learn about it. Like, the email after the board meeting late at night, you know, that we were going to, that Superintendent was going to be gone, I would have liked to discuss that maybe in the, you know, in the meeting, or, you know, this is where we're going. I appreciate the fact that we're looking at all ideas. I would like to continue that within our own county. We have a hard time creating relationships with Lake Wales, and I can tell you, Lake Wales High School and Donna Dunson are doing amazing things, but we can't work out the social piece between our leadership and our staff, that if we're going to practice, you know, learning what's best practice across the country, we need to look within, because we could learn from our, we could learn from people right here in Polk County of what's working and what's not working. More than, you know, I know Ms. Berryman went to that same conference, I just think the optics from the staff, if we would have prepared them, it's all about information and being transparent, and I think if we could work on that end of it, it would have been better. I wouldn't have gotten the pushback from the staff of, we're out here, you know, sweating and bleeding, and our leadership is, you know, listening to Jeb Bush and how we all should be shut down. But if we had messaged that better, I think we wouldn't have gotten, I wouldn't have gotten that from staff. So, maybe working on the transparency of what we're doing. And I don't see it as, I wouldn't pick on, you know, one person. I think in general, taxpayers want to know what we're doing with their money, and so, just being transparent with that process, I think, would be. And if you're going to go to a conference, and it's ran by whomever, and it could be something ideologically that half of us don't agree with, stand up and say, that's where I'm going. This is where I'm going. This is what I'm going to learn, and I'll be back. But to be upfront and transparent, I think, would fix a lot of this.
So noted. We'll work through some of that. I've got that down. Thank you. Ms. Reynolds? Does somebody else have a hand up? I'm sorry. Who was next?
You can go first.
I just want to echo kind of what Ms. Mills said, all of it, because I just had a huge push of people. All they did was see Jeb Bush's name, and they really didn't care who went. You know, they were going to fire back. And I actually sent Superintendent Byrd an email, and never did I question why. As a matter of fact, I think I wrote that in email. I'm not questioning why, I'm just letting you know that these folks, hundreds of them, associated those two things together, and I didn't want her to suffer the consequences, because my second concern was, somebody was out there, like another county or district, trying to find her and hire her, which is a concern of mine.
After the conference.
So, if she's out there, you know what I'm saying? That was my concern.
Well, we won't let them take her, number one.
I forgot, I don't have a cost or who paid. I would rather the district pay for stuff, because it looks like any private entity paying could have an influence, just like, you know, when I was campaigning, if I was taking money, people are going to presume I have an influence from the people giving me money. I would rather the district pay for, like we did for Sarah Beth or whomever, follow that kind of protocol, because it does get into a gray area when we start letting private individuals or private funding, even the scholarship that the conference gives, and they do it on purpose. They give that scholarship to every superintendent. I would rather us pay for that and not be linked financially to private money. It just gets too, I don't know if Wes even cares, but Wes, it does get too gray. I mean, legally, it gets gray when you start taking private money to do things.
It does, and there is a strict prohibition against lobby, people who have a lobbying function, and that is a broad term.
Okay. Ms. Reynolds?
I know you mentioned the transparency, which I completely agree with being transparent. However, I do have a little bit of a concern with it flashing across Bay News 9 that our Superintendent's going to be out of the district for the week, and what that opens us up to, because if you're looking to attack a district, or, I mean, not having your leader in the room is probably a better time to do it than, you know, Grady Judd doesn't notify us every time he leaves town, for very good reason. So, I do have a little bit of concern with alerting everyone that our leader's going to be out of town for a week, and where she's going and what she's doing. But I also, as far as your IRIS request, Mr. Townsend, the first one, the agenda they sent, it starts at 11:15 on Tuesday, which, looking at flights to San Diego, getting there, to the airport, getting to wherever your start time is, I could see it being very difficult to actually, to get on a plane, get there, get deboarded, get to wherever you need to be, and be on a bus for the tours by 11:15. It just isn't feasible, and with the time change, and it just, even the earliest flight I found could get there at 10:40, which would give 25, 35 minutes to get to where you needed to be. So, getting there the night before makes sense to me. The second one, it was responded to, that this was information that would require consensus from the board. So, I don't know if we need to give that consensus as to whether we want that. I don't think that we need to be requesting a minute-by-minute from any of our staff members that are attending the conference.
Nowhere on there do you see a minute-by-minute request from there.
I'm sorry, how was it listed?
You can feel free to read it.
A detailed itinerary.
And cost breakdown.
And cost breakdown.
Is that wrong?
I don't think that we need to, and full schedule for the non-conference days. I don't think that we need to be requesting that from our staff members. I think that they're professionals, and we hire them to be professionals. I think in Ms. Byrd's contract, it says that we expect her to go to professional development opportunities. And I also think that if they're having a conversation about what they're going to do to education, I certainly want our Superintendent to be in the room with Wendy Dodge, so that they're ahead of the game. And whatever's coming to Florida, we can look for ways for how to combat it. I would much rather than be in the room and know what's coming than find out secondhand once it's already done to us, because I think that that's the best way to, A, present our side of the case, and B, to prepare ourselves for how to respond. So, hi.
Super. Thank you. I'd like to wrap this up. 3:30. I will leave it up to you, if you're so inclined to show the video tonight, and you feel that strongly. I'm going to have to leave it up to you, but in the future, I would simply ask all board members, before we do something publicly, I kind of want you to ask the question, is it good for the district? Does it present our district in a positive light as we're trying to move forward? And if so, if you want to show something and air something, I get it, but if not, I would simply ask you to reconsider. Because let me tell you, in a world full of insanity, the one thing we need, if you're going to be anything, for all of you on Facebook, it says, if you can be anything, be kind. And I want to leave you with that message, and I will tonight as well.
Are we going to go to the agenda?
Well, I was going to, do you, I was not going to go piece by piece.
No, I have one.
If you have one question or something that you want to ask.
Yeah.
You have one?
I have C-26. Is that the same one?
Yes.
Both of you? Go for it.
Yeah, I just.
C-26 is?
C-26, I'd like to pull off the consent, or at least have discussion. It's the class size.
With the flexibility.
It's been moved, yeah.
It has been moved.
It has been moved, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Perron want to, okay, so just the other day, I'm stopped by a teacher in tears about class size. So, is this reading that we are going to have the flexibility to increase the average number of students in a classroom?
Mr. Perron will come forward, and as he's coming, this is something we do every year. We do flexibility every year to give us the flexibility. This is nothing new. So, Mr. Perron will now come forward.
This is for students enrolling now, right? Not at the beginning of the school year.
After the, Ms. Tensley used to do this October.
Every year.
He's not going by himself.
Well, in my branch, officer, this is both of us. So, this is, this is the Superintendent's done every year. It allows flexibility from, between the second calc and the third calc for flexibility, so that you're not moving kids all around and adding teachers and that kind of thing. So, just give some flexibility. The Superintendent has recommended that each year. For years, they've done that. So, it's not saying that.
And there's a limit.
Yeah, there's a limit on the class size, and I basically, even when we do the, in the fall, we go in and look at the staffing plan in each school, we looked at every single classroom. We didn't go over the limits that were here listed for, that Superintendent's asking for now.
We have kindergarten classrooms with 23-plus without support, and that's, my concern is just continuing in my district, because Albert Hill is growing so quickly. I understand what you're saying, because you have to have room to put the people that are coming in afterwards. When using an average and be able to do that to some schools or some classrooms over others, I'm just concerned with the support. We're not supporting where we are in some places already, and to add to that is an issue, is a problem for a teacher, as well as the school. This morning has more of it, I'm sure.
Well, she's fine. I just want to say that one of the reasons you also have flexibility, and we've been doing this for years, it's not new, is so when you have a child that enrolls in a school, that you don't have to disrupt by saying, you're here for five days, now I'm sending you down the street. So, you're not putting a burden on the parents and the children in that school. So, that's why you have the flexibility in that. As I said, you give yourself the flexibility, because we have to send it up that we're providing this. But a lot of times, you may not have to use it, but understanding we are growing, you have to have some flexibility in that.
I would like to see the data of what we did last year before this is put on a consent agenda. Like, we're not going to do it today, but like, if we do this every year, this time next year, I want to see how many students were added at this point during this.
Good question.
Just so you'll know, I've got the statute up in front of me. It's limited, but it, and we have done this each year, just as a formality, but the statute specifically allows for a student who enrolls in a school after the October Student Membership Survey to be assigned to an existing class that temporarily exceeds the maximum number under the class size. If the district makes this finding, but it can only be up to three students in kindergarten through grade three, up to five, four- students in kindergarten through grade three, up to five, four through 12. So there are limitations on it, but it's something you do each year.
So is the 25, the five already added in for the four through eight, it's supposed to be 20?
Twenty-two.
Yes.
Twenty-two. As an average?
Yes. I don't know, as far as disruption, I can remember my second year at Stan Ball and the district came in and redid our entire master schedule. That was a disruption. You know, I think that happened a couple of times. I just know that when it says 30, that we started off the year with 35, 38 at different schools, Dr. Aches and I and I guess the area superintendents went class by class again. Those people were struggling. I don't know how many teachers walked out that day, but, you know, all I'm saying is that class size matters, you know? How do you know that? But, because again, the lack of support in a classroom or the lack of an experienced instructor.
I mean, I have an elementary school with five kindergarten classrooms over 20 already. More kids, 25 kids with no parent. I don't know how you expect those teachers to do it. And I understand what you're saying, but.
Right.
We have got to be very cautious about adding students to these heavy, these filled schools already.
If you move a school, we look at those during the year and they climb up and when it warrants getting another teacher. But you have to remember, we're going to pull three or four kids from each.
Right.
If you did that to my student, my child, then you have that argument that my kid loves this teacher.
Yeah. I was the teacher that brought it.
Well, we did it with BAM.
Yeah.
But there is that other side of the argument. I mean, it's.
I think it's the messaging, if you told the parent the kind of direct instruction that could be provided, it's the messaging, that's how you message.
Well, you know, when my kids got moved to another teacher, I had Ms. Wilder come in and do it because I said, they don't pay me enough to break my kids' hearts, somebody else is going to do it. And she volunteered and I said, I'll take it. And it was traumatic for some of those kids.
It's a hard situation. Neither.
Exactly, but it was traumatic.
Close enough, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Byrd, does Ms. Tanks instead have been, you know, with class size?
She hasn't, she did in October and she hasn't made the commitment, is she coming back for?
Oh, I don't know. She held out a lot of initiatives.
This is the first year she really hasn't done this piece, but she's worked with people accountable.
She's an expert on that. I just was curious.
We talked directly before up to the line today.
She's a contact out, she knows that.
She knows it inside and out. Okay, so I think we're good. Any other questions on anything on the board agenda? If not, we stand adjourned for this portion of it and we'll see you in the boardroom at 5:00 o'clock. Is that correct? There is no discipline today, am I correct?
No, there is.
We have discipline with three cases.
Actually, I'm just trying to talk. She just.
We can probably do it before 4:30. You're going to do some.
Parents, no, no parents, just, so when do you want to do that?
4:45, does that work? That's what superintendent recommended, does that work for everybody? 4:45 in the boardroom for discipline, followed by the board meeting around 5:00 hopefully. All right. Thank you very much.